Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Today, July 20th at 6:00 PM. We need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, that we amended it to move up the Village Park and the Clark and Treasuries slot.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. The minutes of July 6th. Do we have any corrections of the minutes of July 6th?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things.
Okay.
First page, number five, about the third sentence down. It said Bill Kearns to sing the permit. I thought he wanted to sing it, he might want to sign it.
Well, you probably do. Hang on, let me get there.
Yep.
I'll just correct it. Okay.
You got that one?
Yep, what else?
Second page, under a second bullet point, Sullivan and Powers, first sentence. It should be items they need from, I think, and not need form.
I'm sorry, where are you? Sullivan and Powers, okay.
Sullivan and Powers, first, end of the first sentence. Probably should be from and not form.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, okay.
And then under, next, number seven, second bullet point, very last of that. Though no need, still no need, still no sign of, should be of, there, liner.
Which bullet point?
Second bullet point, under Town Health Officer.
Yeah.
The last part of the sentence. It says, it should be no sign of. It says no sign of.
Okay.
Okay.
Then under, third page, under Coronavirus, the fourth bullet point. It goes on about the VSO concert being free to the public. There are only 150 allowed to stay. She will be the event officer. I think it should be who the she is there. There should be a name there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that was Michelle.
Yep, okay, but I think that Michelle should be there.
Okay.
And I think the last one is under 14, first bullet point, Cemetery Land. You say land near Burgess Cemetery, Tim Morton has not replied. I think it should be Tim Muller.
Yeah, it's Tim Muller. You anything else, Stan, is that it?
No, that's all I can do.
Alan, what about you? Alan, do you have anything?
Stan's good.
Okay, your name is spelled right today?
I think so.
Okay.
Joe, can I ask a question about the minutes? Under number 11, this is on my mind because I just watched the meeting over again. Under number 11, the last sentence, there was nothing mentioned about Select Board approval of the event, nor was it asked for. I don't recall, and I didn't see that mentioned in the recording. So I'm questioning whether it should be in the minutes, I guess.
I don't know, we never voted to do anything, we just discussed it. There was no motion made, there was no indication, it was just.
You can take that out, but I was just pleading the thought, and we had all this discussion, but there was no action.
There was no action.
That's all that means.
It's up to you.
However the board wants to do it.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it in there.
I actually have something to say about that as well. The way that the sentence is written, it sounds like that the Select Board didn't know, or possibly this town office didn't know anything about the VSO quartet. But the initial email I had from Lisa was an email that stated she had talked with Bill Kearns about asking for a permit to use the library lawn, and he had told her that she needed to talk to the Library Board about that because it was the authority of the Library Board to grant use of the library lawn. And so she did come to a board meeting and ask the Library Board about that. So the town office actually did know about the request. So it's kind of misleading to say that there was nothing mentioned about Select Board approval of the event, nor was it asked for, because actually it initially was asked for. According to Lisa Kissel, she went directly to Bill Kearns. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand, but I don't think Bill ever communicated that to the board, as far as I'm concerned, because it was not our, you know, it was jurisdiction over the library land or whatever.
Right, so then I would say that that last sentence is perhaps unclear.
I don't have a problem with there's nothing mentioned about the Select Board approval of the event, nor was it asked for. I don't have a problem with that, because that's exactly what happened.
Joe, may I make a point also? I also re-listened to that portion of the meeting, and as a matter of what actually happened, that was not said at the conclusion of the topic. And I think the minutes should reflect what actually happened in the meeting, and so therefore I suggest that that last sentence is extraneous. I think it should be removed.
Well, what does the board want to do? I don't remember, I haven't listened to it, and I don't remember the exact terminology or what happened three weeks ago, but I don't have a problem moving it unless somebody else does, so.
I don't actually have a problem with it being there, but if it clears it up and then goes.
Alan, Kathy, how do you feel?
You can remove it.
I'll go along with Stan.
Okay, so why don't we just remove that sentence, and then that's the end of it?
Thank you.
The other item in number 11 is that, actually, if you did go back and listen, there was part of the plan to contact fire and rescue. Lisa was taking care of that. And I was unclear about whether she was going to contact the sheriff or not, but she was. So it was already part of the plan to cut, that's also an inaccuracy.
Well, at the time, we didn't know that.
Yeah, you did know that about fire and rescue, because I told you in the meeting.
Yeah, you did.
It's there. It's hard when there's so many details going on to, you know, to get everything in. Minutes are difficult to take.
Well, wouldn't you propose to change?
As a matter of fact, when I talked to them after the meeting, they had never been asked about it. Keith didn't even know about it. Keith did account for you of the piece on the park without knowing what that was for. He thought it was for the book sale or something. He had no idea, according to him. But whatever you guys want to do.
It's possible that Lisa hadn't notified them yet because the event was still a month out. We weren't, well, anyway, it doesn't matter. It was part of our plan, we've got it in our documentation, you can see it if you like. I did state that Lisa was going to notify fire and rescue.
I will see, I don't have a problem even where it is, at the time you can know, and they weren't contacted, so, but whatever the board wants to do.
Well, I think Michelle just said it. At the time these minutes were taken, they had not been notified. Lisa was going to do it, she just said it. So what is reported here is accurate. There was no porta potties, no fire rescue sheriffs. The fire rescue sheriff had not been notified.
I was notified about it when you called me the next morning, Bill, after your meeting.
Yeah, just leave it in there.
Okay, I agree. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
Make motion we adopt the minutes as edited.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Okay, minutes approved. All righty, okay, the next item is the warrants. The warrants were signed by everyone, and so they were approved. Is anybody have any questions on the warrants or anything? If not, on highway report, Danny, are you here?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can just barely hear you guys.
Okay, so the first item on the list, Danny, is the sinkhole.
Yeah, Stan stopped by, and I don't know if it's old or new, I don't know if there's any way to ever, ever be able to tell.
So what are you going to do about it?
We filled it in, we compacted it, and we're going to repave over top of it.
That was only a question just based on, there was a comment made that we thought there might have been a misunderstanding about why it was there. Maybe not, that was just to clear up the possible misunderstandings.
That's correct.
It doesn't look, Danny, like it's sunk anymore.
No, I don't believe it has. They say we will probably pave it in toward the end of the week.
Okay. The 35, I guess you're halfway through.
So 35, they're going to start paving it tomorrow. They figure in two days to do the paving on it, and then we have to just do the shoulder work after they're all done paving, and that project will be done.
Danny, you're going to get that tree out of there before they pave it?
I was hoping we're going to have time, but I'm going to have to wait until afterwards.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm probably going to wait until it gets a little bit cooler and then take it out.
Danny.
Yeah?
With you going to be paving so soon, and I think it's answered my concern. I went down, take a look at that the other day, and it looked really good, but I had a truck go by me, and it got really dusty as far as another vehicle coming the other way. If they didn't have their headlights on, I couldn't see the other vehicle coming at me. But if you're going to pave it right away, that'll take care of the dust issue, so.
Well, it was all regraded this morning and chloridated this morning.
Oh, you did already chloride, okay. I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if perhaps chloride and blacktop didn't mix, and maybe that was why you were not chloriding. But you're on top of it, no problem, good, good.
I drove by today around 10 o'clock with my car under this wonderful new chlorine, chloride that was on the road. I haven't, so I've got chloride all over my car, like with the pipe.
Sorry to hear that.
I know, but nothing can do about it. I would hope that somebody would fix the Chester part of it, that is so rough, it's so terrible down there. Anybody's been over that.
Yeah, that's bad.
Danny, if nobody has said it, and I don't know if all the Select Board has done it, but I have to tell you, you guys did a great job on the Putnam Forest Road over there with the ditching.
Oh, yep, yep, Mike did most of the work on that one.
Yeah, come out very nice, so. They should be happy with that.
That looks good, but also the other spots that you've done, Danny, are good too.
Yeah, thanks.
And them too.
Yep, thanks. Well, since we're talking about that Better Backroads stuff, I got a call last week, I can't remember what day, it was toward the end of the week, from Alan May, which is one of the ones that heads up the Better Backroads Grants. And they actually have a little bit of money for this year. But the catch to it is, is anybody that agrees to take it this year, you have to have the work all done and paperwork in before December 1st. And we had applied for four places. He hasn't sent me the paperwork back yet, but it totaled right around $18,000 that we applied for. And he asked if I wanted it, and I told him that I would take it. So we will be doing some more of that before December to get that last round of money from him.
Good.
What do you think you're going to do?
He hasn't sent me back what we filled out, and I just saw a bill today. Now my computer's working. So.
Oh, was that you just coming on? Turn one of them off, Danny.
Why?
Yeah, I don't know why that's doing that. He's going to send the paperwork back. The grants were for Cabell Road, I think there's two sections on Cabell Road, there's a section on the Kamichport Road, and there was Woodchuck Hill. So he's sending me the ones that they're going to approve, and we should be getting them in an email for that.
So is it all or nothing, Danny? If you take it, you have to do all four? Or could you take it for those four? If you only got three done, then you just submit reimbursement on three?
I don't have the paperwork at the shop, it's down in the office, so I don't know if that $18,000 does all four of them, or if it's only a couple of them. Once we get caught up, done with this paving, so I have a few minutes. I asked Bill today, when I saw him out there on the road job, to pull them grants so I can figure out which ones he's talking about. But it's for a little over, right around $18,000 that we'll be getting more.
I'd take it if you can do it.
Oh, yeah, I already told him I'd take it.
Good.
Dan, there's.
The deal with that is that they're not going to award it unless you can be, you can be done with the whole thing by December. So we can't take it and then turn any of the money back. We either got to do it all or not.
Right, and I told him we'd get it done.
Whatever we accept, yeah.
Yep.
Dan, have you looked at 121? As you're going down into Houghtonville, there's a big bump or a hole.
I graded Friday part of 121. I don't know if it's the part you're talking about or not, but I did some of it Friday.
It's the tar part.
Yeah, you know where the big frosty is, Danny, you know the one that should come down?
Off on the hill?
Yes, I call that the ski jump.
I haven't done nothing with it.
No. What you should probably do up there, Danny, I was there, I haven't been on 121 because I haven't been to Manchester until last week.
Yeah.
Had to go there this morning to pick up something. I think I would put a sign there, bump, or, you know, something, rough road or whatever. Because it's very difficult when you come off down the hill, unless you know where it is, it's difficult to see.
What do you guys think about renting a roller and just putting some asphalt over that section, or do it with a grader and roll it out? Just for a temporary fix until we can do that section of road?
That would work, for me.
Kind of like what we did, John, on Chester Hill years and years ago.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a lot better than putting a sign.
Just, you know, maybe one or two 10-wheeler loads right there.
That would be, that would work, I think.
It won't be pretty, but it'd be smoother.
Yeah, that'll be good, it'll save me a tire rod or a tire. I fit it every time.
Aye.
Danny.
Yeah?
Back when we got the excavator, there was some discussion, and of course, not everyone was fond of the idea. But now that you've had the excavator for a while, could you talk about how many hours you have on it? Or, you know, you've got a chance to work with it, how much time it saves? Or any kind of feedback now that you've had a chance to use it?
Well, I haven't even looked at the hour meter, but I'm going to say that it's got to be close to somewhere around 350 hours probably on it already. Yeah, I mean, as you can see what we did on Putnam Forest and Record Road, and then we ditched all of Fisher Hill, I mean, it's three times faster than doing it with a backhoe, at least. I mean, at that covert, we did that five-foot covert on 35, we did it in two days. We put 80 feet in, first day we put 60 feet in. We did have, you know, extra help, we had Wyatt Wilber from Jamie Gregory help us. So I mean, yeah, it's a lot faster, and you get a lot more done in a day's time.
Hey Danny, did you roll the backside of Fisher Hill, or is that just the chloride? Because that's all.
We, so, when I hired trucks, I hire, I try to give them so many days so they can plan on a schedule. So I told them I was going to hire them for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for the Route 35 project. We ended up getting it done Thursday, late in the day. So I kept on the three trucks for half a day Friday, so it didn't give them a whole day with no place to go. So I had them haul some SurePack. And one of the places we did was what we call Pet and Gil Flat out in Houghtonville. We SurePacked that and graded that and chlorided it. And then we went and did the backside of Fisher Hill, and just put a thin layer of SurePack on it. And all we did is we rolled it with the small freight liner with the chloride tank when we got done, and chlorided, put quite a bit of chloride on it to see if we could hold it for a while.
Well, that's holding up.
So. Hopefully, no one does burnouts in it like they normally do.
Danny, the grading is on here because Kathy had a question about it, and so she wanted me to put it on.
Yeah.
There are, you know, I mean, I've ridden a good share of the roads, and for the most part, most were okay. But there are some hotspots and a few, and I don't know, if you have some time, maybe you touch them up.
Yeah, when, you know, we did some Friday, I know Parker Hill is really, is probably the next worst one that we have. It's just a matter of getting 35 done, you know, we've been over there. When we ground Monday and Tuesday, I was there until 8 o'clock Tuesday with them, getting that ground. So it's just soon as we get done with that, we can get back to catch up on some of our other road stuff.
Good.
Yeah, Parker Hill, I went up it today.
Parker Hill is like a railroad track.
Yeah, well, that's from the stone that we put in it, that's why I don't like putting stone on hills during mud season. You can never mix it back in enough to get it to pack down. So we're probably end up putting SurePack or something on top of it to try to dilute the stone out, sort of pack in.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic on our hill because of the farm, and it's not in good shape.
We're trying to do all we can with these projects that we're doing.
Is anybody, Danny?
No, just want to say thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Danny, thank you, keep up the good. All right?
Yep.
Is Tim on now?
I haven't seen him.
You're right, so.
I got a text from him, he was coming on at 6:15.
Okay, so it's, well, we have time.
Text him back and tell him to try again if he isn't on, because I didn't see him waiting.
Yeah.
Working on it.
Okay, there's nothing for the, there's nothing for the Clark and Treasuries report, I spoke to Kim today, unless you have something that you need to discuss.
The only thing on the Treasuries report, the only thing is, at some point in time, you're going to have to set, once we know what the tax, have a good idea what the taxes are going to be for the school, we need to set the tax rate, and you'll need to do it as soon as possible once we know. So there might be a special meeting, maybe the 28th if she knows, or sometime shortly after that.
Yeah, I talked to Kim today, and she said to keep open the July 28th, and we could have a short meeting by Zoom to set the tax rate. She's trying to, I think she thinks she'll have all the numbers by then. So I told Bill today to keep that up, keep in mind, so on, just put a little notation on the 28th. It shouldn't be more than a half, you know, 15-minute meeting or something, and we can do it. And then the tax bills, she said, would go out the following week, and they would be due on September 15th. That's what she told me today.
Yeah, and people have been calling about that, so if people ask you about it, because of the, because the school budget, which you just voted for, is not final for 30 days, the state won't do anything with it for 30 days. Then they'll, then they take their time to figure it, and they'll, so the bills will go out sometime, as Joe said, in late August, and the first payment, September 15th, and then again, right away, November 15th, February 15th, and May 15th. It's not going to, they're not going to push them all back, just that first payment. And so if people ask you where their tax bill, that's what's going on.
Okay, anything else?
Bill, would you say that one more time about the schedule, please? I didn't listen carefully enough, that was really important.
It'll be, it'll be September 15th, November 15th, February 15th, and then May 15th. The only one that's going to change is the first one. Instead of being August 15th, it'll be September 15th. Okay?
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Okay, Town Hall repairs, John, are you wanting to put that on?
Yeah, I'm the one that wanted that on. I met with Stan a couple of weeks ago, and we went over what had been done and what needs to be done. And it looked to me like Phase 1 and 3 were complete, and Phase 2 was partially done. And I would just like to see that completed, because that's not a big money item. So Stan can elaborate more than I on it, but that's what I have to say on it.
This is Phase 2.
That's the, to cover up the dirt and the crawl spaces, to try to keep humidity down, and do some, probably going to have to do some re-insulation work, probably under Bill's office, and maybe under Kim's office, because it looks like, what I can see from the outside, it looks like there's insulation falling down. So I'm sure the floors on those were not particularly well insulated at the time. But that involves putting the rubber membrane down in the dirt crawl spaces to try to keep humidity and moisture in. And that's what we talked about. But in my fuzzy math, it looks like we've got about $32,000 between the capital budget and the fund balance for the renovation of the Town Hall. So it looks like we've got about $32,000. And then there's this grant, I think a bill must have sent this out, the Building Communities Grant Program, that we can apply for. And it's pretty specific for historic and municipalities and things like that. I'd like to see if we can apply, I think it's a maximum of $20,000. I'll have to get more specific on that.
When is that due?
When is that due? I have the thing.
You're going to watch for those dates, because they come up quick.
Yeah.
It's September 15th.
Was it?
I would certainly, I would certainly apply if we have the, if this project is okay.
All right. Maybe, maybe, John, you and I can get together again and see if we can put up, if the, and I think you're right about the membrane not being a terribly expensive project. But we have the windows, the rest of the windows up on the second floor. Remember, we looked at the windows that were already replaced in the back. We've got those five or six more windows up on the second floor that can be replaced with decent ones. Maybe we can put those all together and then apply for that grant.
So Stan, just remember once before we applied for some grants, and those grants are, we can only get grants on the historic part of the building, at least at that time. So just keep that in mind as you're doing things. How we spend money, we may want to do things on the addition with our money and use historic money on things that are in the original building.
Yeah, that's a good point, because, but one of the, one of the dirt crawl spaces is under the original part of the building.
Correct, correct.
It's under Kim's office and Bill's office, which is new.
Yep.
Right. And then the windows, of course, up on the second floor, those are all part of the historic aspect of it. So I think that would be fine. But maybe, John, if you and I want to get together and just, for a specific thing, maybe we should do that.
Wait, just email me, Stan. Just email me with a date.
Okay. What I'd like to do is maybe get some sort of a nod for a go-ahead from the rest of the board to pursue getting that work done, getting bids for that.
I would. I mean, let's just go with the project.
I thought you already had the nod, I thought we'd already discussed it like it was in the process.
Okay, so it's a continuing, I'm just not, I don't, you think so? I mean, I hope so.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Because the other thing we'd like to do is, once we get the actual, sort of the bones of the Because the other thing we'd like to do is once we get the actual, sort of the bones of the building up to where we ought to be, we can look at, doing some air conditioning work. Uh, it was scorching hot in the Lister's room. I mean, it was, it was almost unbreathable. Um, but it's interesting, those, uh, air conditioning bids, which I'll get to John so we can look at them. They range, this is for the whole building, and we can shave these back a little bit. But the odd thing is they range from sixteen thousand dollars to sixty thousand dollars. So it's a huge range of prices. So we have to.
Didn't, didn't we have that discussion already? And we thought part of the problem was the, the electrical service.
Yeah.
Some people assumed the service was adequate as it was.
Yeah.
And some people recognized that the service was not, uh, adequate.
Yeah.
And that was part of the reason that bid was higher, was to upgrade the electrical service.
He ended, he didn't, he didn't question, he looked at it and still didn't question the electric service. So there's, there's a problem.
Well, we'll take a look at it, Stan, and then bring it back.
All right, all right, John, I'll get ahold of you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, is the town, uh, health officer on? No.
Did Tim come on?
No. Well, you, that's.
Tim's waiting, Tim's waiting in lobby, just a second. Okay, Tim should be on.
There he is.
There he is. Hi, Tim.
Hey, sorry about that. I've been trying to log on for a while. Um, sometimes teams is like that. I'm not sure what the problem was, but I ended up finding email and trying it that way. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm here.
Okay. Tim, um, at the last meeting, I know you did the, you gave us a, a, an estimate for the invasive plant and you did other things. Um, the board wanted to, uh, before that we could discuss any further things, they wanted to have a town, a, a restoration plan, which Alan and I put together. Have you seen that?
Yeah, I just looked at that.
Okay. So I, I guess the, the, the issue here now is, is, uh, is what I would like to see the board do today is to either say yes or no, uh, and have you or whoever is gonna do it, do a, a plan to see how much, uh, timber we have there and what, what would be our estimate of, of the funds if we, if we did the logging job. So that then we, we would know how much money we have, and then we could go into discussion of how we wanna spend the money, whether we use this plan or another plan or whatever.
Okay, well, the, um, what you're talking about is the timber inventory.
Yeah.
And it's a relatively simple thing to do, to do a volume estimate slash inventory on a parcel, especially one of this size. When you get into the dollars and cents of money estimates, it's a little harder to do with our inventory system. So I don't, I couldn't provide you with something that was plus or minus a hundred or even a thousand dollars. But I can come up with a really good estimate of the volumes on the parcel. And then apply some relative average dollar amounts to different species and come up with something that's useful. But not guaranteed. Uh, the timing's good. I'm reinventoring all the, um, gra, the state grafted Chester parcels right now. So it's handy. So I, we're capable of doing that.
Well, I, I, I would, I understand that, Tim, uh, but you would give us somewhat of a, of an estimate. I mean, it might be off by two, three, four, even five thousand dollars, but we would get some idea of what we could get in revenue. Is that correct?
Yes, and then you never know how much it's gonna be until you actually put something out to bid, but we could definitely get a good idea.
Right. But the, the question is that, is, is the board wanna, wanna proceed with this, with this study here? Or do we not wanna go it? So that's, I guess that's the question. The plan, you know, the, the plan can be discussed at, at any time later on, but do we wanna, do we wanna go ahead and do the, the logging and, and try to raise the money to do something with the park in the future?
I would move forward with it.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Um, any other discussion? Tim, when, when could you, when do you think this would happen?
I, I would tie the inventory into the work I'm doing in, um, July and August. So I would, because I'm doing work in that area now, it's really convenient. If I was busy up in Plymouth or something, it would be a different story, but it would be this summer that I would do the inventory work.
So like, like, maybe like around mid-September or something like that?
Oh, yeah, I should be able to come up with something, you know, useful then, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, any other discussion? So if, if, if there isn't, all in favor of having Tim do the inventory, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Close? Okay. All right, do we need anything else of Tim? Alan, you, you, uh, you wanna say anything else?
Well, I guess I don't wanna get the cart before the horse, but yet I don't wanna waste time if we have time to get some things done. At some point, we're gonna need a log landing and that would eventually become a parking area. Um, do we wanna start anything on that, or do we wanna wait until we get numbers, uh, from Tim before we make a commitment?
Hey, Al, the town has equipment. Why couldn't they do some of that?
The, the town does, but, um, you know, what, we just heard what's going on. I, 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 I would be happy to work with them as a volunteer cutting and they could work with equipment. I'd be happy to do that. Um, but I'm kinda guessing, taking on that, um, those other grant, those eighteen thousand dollar grants and normal maintenance and taking vacation. We aren't gonna probably do anything there until this fall. That would be my guess.
Yeah, let's ask the question.
Yeah, may, you know, maybe it could be, Danny, I don't know your schedule. I mean, you have a lot to do, but maybe during that period of time, um, where, um, you know, the, the late November, early December, when there's not a lot of snow or ice or maybe you have some time to do that. What happened here?
If it's late in the year, I can probably help with it.
What happened here? There's something that says.
I don't know. Are you back?
I think.
Yeah, see ya.
Yeah.
The top of Danny's head. It doesn't shine like mine does.
I think late in the year, we could probably do something to help out.
Late, the summer season or late in this fiscal year or calendar year?
Late, late in the calendar year, you know, November, December. Cause you guys weren't gonna do any logging there until the winter months, correct?
If we do any cutting, and I really look at this as a step-by-step process, like I think the inventory is, is the first step. And then I think after we have some idea about volumes and what the feasibility is, and then, then making decisions about cutting comes after that, so. Uh, but if, if town decided to proceed with some sort of harvest, it would, for, for that property, it would definitely be this winter. And whether we can get some in this winter or not depends on availability. Um, but if we, if winter was critical, we could bid it that way, like it had to be this winter. Um, November's a tough time, as you know, to put roads in and landings in, but if that's when you're available, that's when you're available.
Yeah, it'd be late in the season.
The, um, do you guys all disappear during rifle season?
We, we usually try to use most of vacation time up by then, but.
Okay, so, um, I, I mean, the work, I saw your workout on the Williams River Road, uh, William, um, WC Putnam Road, it was, it was beautiful, so I'd be happy to have you do.
Well, there, there's no question, they could do a very nice job about it, trust me, believe me.
Doesn't the, the logger at least make some sort of a rough, you could kind of indicate to them where you want the landing to be, and they, they would do whatever they had to do. Right? And then after the whole thing is done, you get back in there after the fact and, and actually clean it up and make it what we want.
Well, if you remember when we walked in there, the, the boundary of the parking area, log landing is already laid out. So that's already been defined. Um, it depends on the gravel. If you looked at that bid or, or the information we had, was what, seven hundred and fifty yards of gravel to build that base up? So it's not muddy and we're not dragging mud out onto the town road. So that has, that prep work has to happen in order to get the gravel in place.
Oh, be, even before the logging starts?
I think so, unless you get real bitter cold weather and you can freeze that all up.
It's always better to have this landing, landing, uh, with some, with some gravel so you, you can do that, so, um. But, but let's see, let's see what happens. I mean, we could, we could discuss this. The important thing is now Tim can start his inventory and then we can move on from there.
Can everybody wait just a second? I don't know what the heck went on. That can be to get control back, so wait one second.
We have, I have two pictures here.
Yeah, we do.
I, yeah, so do I, and I don't know what the heck the hell this is about.
It includes everybody, it's just smaller, that's all.
Something happened there and I, I don't.
I think, I think it was Tim Morton's fault. No, he didn't.
That, that landing site is gonna, is, is a tough one to, to rough it in. There's a lot of places where you could.
Maybe I could just hang this one up. Wait a second.
Okay, sounds risky.
Valerie Looney is on.
May I suggest that somebody shared a screen and it's still being shared and somebody has to use the stop presenting button? Whoever shared that previous screen with the, uh, login, with the, uh, town, or the village park plan?
That's, I think that's right.
Yeah, it went, it went, it went nuts when the village, when the, when the thing was put up there for the plan. I don't see Bill. Is Bill still here?
No, he, he shut himself out of the meeting. He should be able to rejoin.
There he comes.
That's Wendy.
How many, uh, these have you guys done so far this, in this era?
How many what?
How many of these teams meetings, you've been doing them right since March?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, well, while Bill's trying to figure out a way back in, I was just gonna say that the, um, there's a lot of sites where you could roughen a landing. Use the landing, then finish it later for parking, but this place is really difficult because it's a steep approach. It's really wet ground. It's the sort of place where the site work before the gravel is more important than the gravel. So I would say, if you were to do something now, if you could roughen on approach and then you could start drying the site out, moving some water around, it might be helpful, but otherwise, I wouldn't go the route of logging first and then fixing it later. Um, and I think that what's needed out there is pretty significant, that you would, the amount of work you wouldn't need for a timber sale.
Hey, Tim, Tim, there's other options on the landing?
That's a fair question. Um, a little bit, I, what, I shouldn't say a little bit, but the amount I know about the property, it seems like the landing potential is very limited. Um, Alan, you've been all over that parcel. What do you think?
I think where we flagged it out is probably our best option.
Yeah.
Based on what I've seen.
Danny, maybe if you have, uh, you know, a, a few minutes between grading and paving, you might wanna just take a look up there and, and, you know, at the next meeting, give us some of, some of the thoughts that you had.
Yeah, I can meet up there again with Alan, Tim, if, if they want to.
Yeah, I'm game.
Uh, sure, I can do it.
We'll let Alan be the, you can set up a time and date, maybe.
Well, I, my schedule is easy. It's, it really counts more on Tim and Danny. You, you guys you guys probably have real jobs. I just, you know.
The end, the end of this week would be good for me.
Works for me. You got a chance at the end of the week, Dan, uh, Tim?
It, I, I was, I'd love to do it Friday morning, but I have something I'm tentative on. I'm waiting to hear back. Um, I can either do it at the beginning of the, maybe the end of the day on Friday. So how about if I just contact you two and we'll figure, and I'll, once I figure that out?
Yeah, 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 let's do it.
That's all.
Okay. We don't need to tie everybody up.
What happened, Bill? Did anybody know what happened to Bill? He's, uh.
He's, he's trying to find a way back in, so maybe if someone forwarded the back the meeting invite, he might be able to do that. I think, I think I can sign off right, Alan.
I think so, Tim.
You could go, Tim. Thank you.
See you all. I'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Tim.
Sure.
Thanks.
There's a thing on the bottom here that says request control. I've never seen that on a screen.
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
Times, the one that we're actually running the meeting should be forty-seven, fifty-eight minutes, and that's fifty-seven oh four. So that looks like Bill's clock ticking away.
I don't know.
This is the first time we've had so many people on a call, so I think that's part of the challenge.
I don't think so.
But we need Bill because he's got, he's got the minutes, so I don't know what we can do here. Um, maybe I need maybe we need, I have to call him?
Yeah, call him and just see if you got.
You know, you know the number then? I never remember it.
Joe, Joe, I am here. I am here.
Oh, you're here, okay. Okay.
Just can't see me.
No, I see you now. But Bill, I wouldn't worry about it. We, we got, we got double the picture here, but at least we're all, we can, can keep going and figure out what happened later.
Yeah, it'll be double recorded, so that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so, um, we did the village park, um, now we're at the, um, well, the town also, uh, Rich is not on, right?
Yeah, he's there.
I am.
Do you have anything?
Uh, that you guys wanted to talk about, like, give an update on the CIC building if you'd like, or we can specifically Bill said you guys wanted to talk about a potential ordinance for wearing a mask in town? Or I got emails to that effect.
Well, if you wanna give us an update, go ahead.
Uh, as far as the CIC building, I mean, it's not a whole lot to update. Uh, we're waiting for the, the report from the lawyer and see what happens on that front, and I know they've been doing some air quality testing and some of the initial, uh, reports have been coming back. Uh, and again, just to reiterate, I mean, they are, uh, hold on a second, let me plug in my phone. They're, uh, they are just doing historical testing down there, what was that was left from the Matrix Building, uh, Matrix, uh, company. So that's in, in the works. Uh, it is moving forward. Uh, as slow as that can be, and hopefully we'll be hearing something about that coming up in the near future. And like I said, I mean, I thought I was here because you guys wanted to talk about the mask ordinance in town. But I'll let you ask me what you'd like me to talk about.
Well, does anybody wanna talk about the mask ordinance?
I think, does it, how's to be an ordinance? I mean, I've heard discussion or seen discussion, written discussion, uh, an ordinance and the procedure. Can't we just make a statement?
Interrupt, there's really, there, what I said like late today in emails, I'd say to all of you is don't worry about what form it takes. Do you want to control people wearing a mask? If you want to control people wearing a mask in town, you can control people wearing. If you want to control people wearing a mask in town, you can control people wearing a mask in town. I don't even know how you do it, but I sent you this stuff from VLCT, they don't know how to do it either, but they did know that you should get with your attorney and decide what the form of that regulation would be, whether it's an ordinance, whether it is a directive from you, I have no idea what it is.
How, how are you?
Well, that, that's the whole thing. It doesn't matter what it is, you enforce it by telling somebody, they're the person that has to enforce it, so that's the problem. You can have the mask thing, but however you're going to enforce it, that's probably the biggest part of the discussion. Like, well, there, there are two parts, one, you, you philosophically, you want to tell people they have to wear masks all the time outside when they're in the village, when they're, or you want to do a geographic area, whatever you want to do, and then who's gonna enforce it, so.
Why do we need that? I mean, this.
Bill, may I just interrupt for one second? Could you just share with those, those of us who are observing and participating in this meeting, how the idea of a mask ordinance got on this agenda? I don't remember it being discussed as part of the agenda.
It, it wasn't, Rich, Rich had, had sent the select board some emails over the, and I did not put it on.
No, that's not how it happened. The, uh, I think Keith Hermes had brought it to, I think, Bill's attention, then an email came over to me, what I had thought, and the only thing I had shared with the select board and whoever else was on the, the email thread was I had, as town health officer, I had taken, I wouldn't say complaints, but I had taken a couple of tip offs of, uh, particular people going into the post office and so on, in the store and et cetera, not wearing masks, and I have had a handful of conversations with people, basically, you're freaking out your neighbors, I mean, you know, and for your health and theirs, would, would you mind wearing a mask? And generally speaking, uh, the people that I had spoke with as town health officer, they were agreeable and, you know, they begrudgingly said, yeah, no, I kind of see it. A couple of them didn't, and said it was against their, you know, rights and all this sort of thing. Uh, and my only comment with that, uh, but again, I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to sway it one way or the other, uh, I'm just saying if you are gonna take it to one next step, uh, just be aware you're gonna have to enforce it somehow. I can have conversations with people and try to educate people, but that's as far as my authority goes as town health officer. Uh, you will have to, uh, put some kind of an ordinance in, and if you get habitual offender, if you will, uh, you're gonna have to call the sheriff's department and you're gonna have to have some kind of a ticketed system or whatever if you plan on enforcing this. And I'm not bringing, I did not start bringing this up, uh, and I'm not trying to push the conversation one way or the other, I was dragged in, into it more than anything.
I think it's a nightmare.
In, in my mind, it doesn't make any sense to have an unenforceable ordinance, I think we can just make.
That's what I'm saying.
Recommendation, that, uh, you know, you hope that people take it seriously and the, the Grafton Select Board strongly recommends that, uh, people going into businesses or if you can maintain socially distancing, that you, you wear a mask. I, I don't know what else you can honestly do.
And I think that's fine, Stan, but you already have that now, and I had talked to the people from the store, I talked to the post office, uh, I checked in with Orson, uh, they're all telling me that, oh, I'm sorry, I did not, uh, talk to Orson, but he does have a sign on his door. I tried to get ahold of the tavern, I had not heard back from them, but the, I've got most of the complaints from people not wearing masks in the store, I had heard through other people saying that, and through the post office, and the people at the store and the people running the post office, both told me they do not feel that it is an issue, most people are abiding by, uh, wearing a mask in, inside their building. Whether they're lying to me, but I mean, I'm not sure, but, uh, that's what I, I, that's what I was told, so I don't think there's a big problem. Uh, again, I'm passing on what I was told.
Let's leave well enough alone.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, that would be my suggestion, but.
Let's move on, Joe.
Let's move on.
No, no, I, I, I just, I, I really have to ask this question, uh, from a process standpoint because, um, I know we're all trying to figure out how to run meetings and everything else in the digital age, so I just, um, I just need some clarification from Joe and/or Bill, that whatever emails led up to this conversation and a select board meeting were not discussions among the select board members via email, but were simply, um, suggestions for agenda topics. Could you just please clarify and make us feel comfortable that, um?
I don't know if I'll make you feel comfortable, if somebody, i- if somebody wants something on the agenda and they feel strongly about it, there's other things without, and there's people at this meeting who brought up things on the agenda, and I asked, Joe, this person wants to talk about that, can we talk about it? We talk about it. I mean, that's how you get on the agenda. We don't have a study group or anything.
You're saying there was no discussion among the select board members about this ordinance via email, it was simply a matter of getting on the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the discussion was whether or not we should discuss it.
Okay, okay, that, I just want a clarification about that, it was not clear to me when this topic came up, how it came up on the agenda.
And we cannot discuss it before it comes up.
Right, yeah.
Let me remind, let me remind you Suzanne, that when, when emails, uh, come in from whoever, um, the response goes to Bill and, um, not, we do not make, we, we as individual select boards do not discuss, uh, how we, you know, what we should or shouldn't do, and it goes on the agenda, and then like it did here now, and then there's a discussion in, in, uh, in a, you know, viable, um, select board meeting.
Okay.
That's how it's been.
Guys, check.
Can I, can I just ask a question? My, my question about this would be, it doesn't mention mask ordinance on the agenda, right?
No, it didn't because, uh, it was the health officer, that's what, that was just.
But I, I'm just gonna play, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, I don't have an opinion one way or another about an ordinance, but if I felt strongly about it, I would have wanted to have seen it on the agenda one way or the other, so.
Good point.
Perhaps you'd like to talk about it at another time where it's actually on the agenda?
That's, that's why I said.
That's a good point.
That's why I said let's move on, because it's not on the gender.
Okay, so, agenda for next week.
And you can't, I mean, you, you've, it sounded like you've made a decision one way or the other, and I would recommend that you don't make a decision until it's actually on the agenda, like John just said, I guess.
Right.
Okay.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right, the virus, Suzanne, you have something you want to talk about the virus?
Have said what I just said. I am happy to, um, what I have to say can either fit here or in public comment, whichever you feel more comfortable with, uh, on the basis of what I just said, because I did not ask to be on the agenda in the coronavirus section, but I do have a public comment that fits here. So with, whatever the select board would like for me to make these comments, I will do so.
How does the board feel?
Doesn't make any difference to me.
Yeah.
Don't make any difference to me, it's a comment, that's all it is.
So I, thank you very much, so I have been reflecting a lot on the conversation the select board had last, um, meeting about coronavirus, and it seems to me that the select board, if you step back and think about that discussion, a lot went on, but if you step back and think about it big picture, there were concerns expressed about public safety and also, uh, concerns that, about how do we manage reopening? And these are, uh, considerations that all of us are having both, uh, personally and, uh, for the public good, um, just how much do we try to control the virus and how much do we try to balance that with gathering again? Um, I think the evidence has shown that in states and communities that are very deliberate about how they do reopen, uh, the, the success record is, is better. And so I wanted to specifically follow up on some, uh, email traffic, um, that compared the, um, the Grafton Public Library Plan and the VSO Concert, uh, event to the Green Mountain Softwa- softball league and as reported in the Chester Telegraph, um, because I was very curi- curious about just how those two actually compared, and, um, I want to just share with you a spreadsheet that I put together. Uh, can you see the spreadsheet that I put, uh, that I'm putting on the screen now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm happily not gonna go through all this, but as you can see, there are three columns on this spreadsheet, um, the Vermont State Guidelines, the Green Mountain Softball League, and the Grafton Public Library VSO Concert. And this, uh, analysis just simply steps through all of the ACCD, well, not all, but a set of the ACCD and VOSHA, uh, guidelines that have been issued as part of the governor's ex- executive order, and you can see those are the ones that we're all trying to abide by because they are not voluntary, they are, uh, according to the Attorney General, enforceable. And then I did an analysis of what happened as far as we know through the Chester Telegraph, uh, article with the Green Mountain Softball League, and then what, uh, Michelle reported to us last week was happening with the Grafton Public Library. And my conclusion after doing this analysis, you could see, um, as you just glanced down through it, that, um, I believe one of the emails said, it's not too much of a stretch to imagine the same thing happening with the Green Mountain Softwa- League at the VSO Concert. And as I went through this analysis, to my mind, these are not two analogous situations, these are not comparable situations. Um, just looking at, at number one, compliance with all reopening and training plans, to my knowledge, there was no such plan for the Green Mountain Softball League, and there are three plans by the library that were, uh, put together by the library board and voluntarily, uh, uh, offered to the select board for its files. And on line number two, there is an executive order that says no single gathering outdoors more than one hundred fifty people, three hundred fifty people showed up for this softball game, and there is a specific, uh, order not to have a sports tournament of any kind, and this softball tournament was conducted. It was clear that there, that the, uh, library is limiting to one hundred fifty people and, and as a follow-up, actually to one of the select board, uh, recommendations, pre-registration is required as it would have been in the VSO Concert at the church every year. And as you step down through there, you'll just see the social distancing, group, ga- groups not gathering before or after activities. In the Green Mountain Softball League, they had an awards ceremony after the, the game, again, specifically forbidden by the executive order, whereas for the concert, it was gonna be the concert only with no pre or post events planned. Um, I could go on and on, in fact, if you're, if you'd like, I'll continue this investigation with Julie Hans in the, in the, uh, town manager in Chester to get even more details about this, but my conclusion after studying this situation is that it would be a stretch to compare these two, uh, they are not an analogous at all, and that the Green Mountain Software League flagrantly violated several, uh, sections of the governor's executive order, and it resulted in a situation of chaos and high risk for the participants. Whereas if we look at the Grafton Public Libraries Plan that they presented to the select board last week, it indicates meticulous planning on their part and, uh, compliance with all of the, uh, stipulations of the executive order and thus minimize risk to our community. Now, I'm not suggesting at all that, uh, the cancellation of the con- of the concert was not the prudent thing to do, but what I am suggesting is that this spreadsheet become part of the public record and part of the minutes of this meeting, because I would hate for it to be construed, uh, misconstrued even, that, um, there is any comparison between what happened, uh, in Chester to the planning that has taken place for the library lawn. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, I, I, I'm not sure.
Joe, can I speak?
Has to do with, with us, but if, if there's no objection, would you want to put it into the public record?
I would like to have it put into the public record, thank you, yes.
Joe, can I speak? Joe?
Yeah.
Can I speak?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Um, that was my email, and perhaps a, a, a connection or was a stretch, I should not have said that. But here's where, here's where I was coming from. I attended, um, the drive-by celebration for, uh, Joan Lake. That was an event that was pretty well planned, and most of the people, um, did well, but I stood and watched people get out of their vehicles, come up and give her a hug and give her gifts. Not acceptable. Um, we have, uh, neighbors that are from out of state, that have a property not far from our house. As they drove up here, they had a conversation in their vehicle and said, I have to remember to keep social distance when we meet people here. They met with a contractor to do work and immediately the person, the lady of the couple got out and shook hands with the contractor, even though she had just barely told her husband, I need to keep social distancing. So what my concern is, a group of a hundred and fifty people in town is very easy, all good intentions for somebody to go up, I haven't seen you in fifteen years, I'm so happy to see you, and, and it's all meant to be done well, but it's so easy to cross that line and you don't mean to, and so that's where I was coming from, that it's easy for things to get out of hand, and I don't mean out of hand like, um, sit, standing around drinking beer in a celebration, that's not where I'm coming from. My correlation is when you get a hundred and fifty people together, it's really hard to have everybody keep the spacing that they need to keep. That's the statement I was trying to make, and I didn't do a very good job of it, but that's where I'm coming.
No, so Al, I, look, you have stood up for public safety in many, many ways in this, in this select board, and I respect that very much, uh, and I do appreciate your apology for the stretch comment, thank you for that. I think there is a key difference, however, and the, the one that I was trying to, uh, point out, what you're saying is, you get a hundred and fifty people together and it, and the social distancing and the masks and all that you've required can go out the window, and I totally understand what you're saying about that. What I'm trying to point out is the following, the planning of these two events was completely contrary. The, uh, the softball tournament was held when it was, uh, against an executive order, they planned it anyway, they had it anyway. They planned an awards ceremony when it was completely against an executive order. What I'm trying to compare here, not the eventuality that can occur when people gather, that is the risk we all face in reopening. What I'm trying to point out here respectfully is the difference in the planning of the two events, and one type of no planning, flagrant violation creates risk, the other type of meticulous planning has the tendency, or at least the potential, to minimize risk.
Okay, so, I'm not, I can, can we move on, or I mean, do?
No, I would just like to, if I could get, um, the assurance that the, uh, that, that this analysis would be included in the minutes in this portion of the meeting, if that's okay with the select board. Board, I would appreciate that.
How does the board feel like that? We need to make a motion or something to make this happen, I believe. Or does it become public record, Bill, because it's being recorded?
If you guys will make it part of the minutes, we'll make it part of the minutes. If you don't make it part of the minutes, I'm not making it part of the minutes. It's up to you.
I think that the point that Suzanne's making is well-taken, and as is Al's comments too. And because it's been discussed, it should be part of the minutes.
I'm fine with that, as long as you include it all. But my point is, you can plan all you want, and people, even though they try to play by the rules, their good intentions go by the wayside when a motion or they get caught up in the moment.
Yeah, I take your point on that, Al. I really do.
Maybe somebody want to make a motion here so we can vote on it?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second. I think it's discussed enough, so hold a favor of including this in the minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Same with me. So what is that, three to two?
Two.
Who's the nay?
Me and Stan.
I said nay.
Oh, so three.
John, Stan, and you are nay?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The reason I said nay, I had no part in what Al's emailed, so I don't feel that I should vote for this.
I didn't send it to the Select Board because I'm not supposed to.
I know. That's why I'm saying nay.
Right. No, I get it. Yeah.
All right, can we move on?
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to have the discussion. I really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Suzanne. Dave Culver, you're on.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start with going to the meeting chatroom, and you should see a link there just for others that are visiting. I think I've sent all of you guys the link already, but this is about the village center designation put on and offered by the ACCD at the state level. And I'm here to ask if you'd be willing to sign a resolution at some point, not tonight, to support this application. And so with that, and your permission, I'd like to take control of the screen and just show you a couple of things. I know I've sent some stuff to you, we got other guests, and maybe go over the big pieces of it, and then we can talk about it from there.
Go ahead.
All right, let's see. Everybody see that screen?
Yeah.
All right. What you'll see on the ACCD site, the link that I sent you is a series of links. One of the links will take you to this application guideline document. It's a long PDF that explains everything, and this has been my guideline for doing what we've done so far. And I'm just going to move across. I've cut out pieces of that document to kind of explain some stuff. At this point, the board has discussed this, and I'd love to know people's opinions. We can't find any negatives that go with this program. The state has long had a goal of maintaining and improving small historic settlements. Grafton is a small historic settlement, and what they've done is say, "If you register as a village center designation, then we'll offer these things to you." So this is kind of the, one of the sheets. It's the propaganda that goes with it and the benefits. I am not going to be able to explain in depth all of this, because there's a lot of weeds here, but I'll go through what I can. The first one's technical assistance. I don't know exactly what that means. What I can say is that this department and Richard Amore have been unbelievably responsive and have bent over backwards to the point we're at right now. If it's that level of service after, assuming we do go for it, after we get this designation, I assume it's just another contact to help us do things. It's got these downtown and village, downtown center designation is for larger areas, and then later on, it's going to talk about a neighborhood designation, which the Planning Commission does not feel is appropriate. So three slightly different ones. Village Center is the one we're talking about. There are a series of tax credits. I'm about to show you another link or another PDF that I'm not going to go through, but there's a whole bunch of them. And everything I can see says that if you own a business in town, if you own a property in town, and you want nothing to do with the village center designation, there's no impact. If you want things, all it does is move you up the ladder a little bit and maybe open the door, some things otherwise you would not have. Now, that is our perception. Again, I'd love to hear somebody's opinion that's heard anything else. I've talked to a couple of planning groups that have it in our region that I work with, and they don't see any negatives either. So there's these tax credit. I don't understand how grants work, but there are grants have point systems. By having your VCD, there's an additional point system that goes into that. And so when state grants are available, it moves you up that ladder a little bit. And then these last two, I don't think affect us. This first one deals with state buildings and some other stuff, and I don't see us having state buildings in our town. But again, what I'm showing you is what I know. And the other one is, once you get your village center designation, then you can go for your neighborhood development area, which again, the way we see it, is not something we want. That's more for, almost like you've got neighborhoods around the outside of a compact village, which we do not have. Up here on the tax credits, not going to go through them all, but there is a separate document I have sent you folks. It's a link on that page that I've sent via the chatroom. And this is simply seven pages of what the VCD designation does for you. Moves you up the ladder in a variety of things. There's a lot of things in here, from historic buildings to municipally-owned buildings to the education building. If there is a school within your boundary, then that also falls into this grant program. So I'm not going to go through all of these. You see, I'm on page two right now. It goes on and on. I wanted to show you that. And again, I think you folks that really live in this world, this is not my world, will make a lot more sense of it than I will, but that's one of the things. This is the stuff that we've put together. It's almost ready to go, and I'll explain the process I recommend to get us there. The first thing is a cover letter. We do have, whoop, there's your map you're going to be looking at. We do have a cover letter, and I will inform you that, I said earlier, that Richard Amore has been incredibly helpful. Everything you're seeing here that we've developed, the cover letter, the map, a lot of other stuff, I have sent him already in PDF format, and he has sent us lots of feedback from, "Hey, that's fine, don't mess with it," to, "Hey, you better add this, this, and this if you want to make sure this gets approved in the first round." So we're making those final edits, and in fact, our last Planning Commission, we as a group went through those recommendations from Richard Amore, kind of thing. So when I show you wherever it was, the cover letter, if you want, I can go through this tonight, I don't think you want that. It's one of those technical things. It's not a letter to your aunt. It's a cover letter that's supposed to have components. It's a checklist. We went through and put the checklist together, and this is what the cover letter is. The next thing is an authorization from the town or village select board. You have two ways of approaching this. I'm hoping, the ideal from my perspective, would be that you, as a Select Board, vote unanimously to approve this, and then, at the appropriate time, not tonight, you sign, all of you, because I think five signatures would be more powerful than three, this resolution that I sent you a copy of. I'm not a wordsmith. I didn't develop a lot of this. There's a lot of cutting and pasting from a variety of different websites, but you guys have seen that. So that's item number two. Item number three is simply a notification of both your Regional Development Corporation, which is out of Brattonboro, and our Regional Planning Commission, which is the Wyndham Regional Planning Commission, that we are planning on applying for this. I have those letters composed. The Planning Commission has looked at them. I didn't feel comfortable sending them out saying, "We're applying for it," until we get a resolution or a vote from you folks on this. But those letters are ready to go out when I get some indication of where we're going. Confirm Planning Process is simply a letter we've received from the Wyndham Regional Commission, a nice formal letter. We have it in PDF form, because when this is done, all of this is going to be packaged and sent out, saying that, yes, we confirm that the planning process was appropriate and followed. This goes back to our town plan being approved back in January. The village center designation boundary, there's a lot listed here, and a gentleman from the Wyndham Regional Commission, Jeff Nugent, has been working with us a lot on this. A lot of little pieces. I'll show you the map. This is the map, and again, I don't know how well you can see it. Maybe you can guide me. I think there may be questions about the map. Give you a real basic on it. The map I've sent you, first of all, was the first draft. We're on the third draft now. Chris Wallace, in particular, sent a very long list of edits and corrections of the map, along with a lot of other people, and not a lot. The Planning Commission has given us pieces. The boundary is set, and I'll talk about that in a minute. The properties within the boundary have been corrected by Chris and others. And I want to be honest, it's one of those things. This is a snapshot, and we think we're going to have it really, really, really close. If we've got something wrong, let us know, but they know it's a snapshot. Three weeks after we turn this map in, a business is going to sell, something's going to happen, but this is the map. The boundary started with the Planning Commission, with many maps saying what we wanted. Our original map went all the way down to the Grafton Ponds, went all the way over to Lawrence and Wilson, went up Chester Road quite a ways. When Richard saw that the first time, he was adamant, "There's no way you get close to that." The definition has to be very, very compact. And after we did some research and looked at other places, an example would be right down the road is Saxon's River. It's a very tight area. So we cut off about a quarter mile all the way around, and they said, "No." We cut off to Joan Lakes. No, it's smaller. So finally, Richard came out, and most of the Planning Commission, along with some community members, spent, oh, an hour, hour and a half, actually walking through the town, drawing everything out. Richard's opinion is, if we sell it appropriately, this oversized boundary will probably be approved by the board. But he is not the board, and he cannot say, "Yep, that boundary will be approved." He was very concerned about a variety of things. For example, over here, these houses, he talked about, you know, you ought to come down and go right down the middle of the street there. Those houses should not be in there, you know? And we cut it off here. We stretched it a little bit here. We even had an area up Chester Road, three houses, and he's like, "No. You do that, and you're going to have problems. Cut it short." So this, I'm going to be blunt, could be a problem. I wouldn't be surprised if they do something to cut it off here, but we tried to stretch it, because it is the Wyndham Foundation. It is one of the anchors that makes up our village. So at this point, I'm going to stop. I'm going to take a breath. Questions and concerns about the map, because my guess is there might be some.
Yeah, Dave, you know, we've already talked about this. I think one of the biggest things that I can see that's not included on the map is, sadly enough, the Grafton Village Cheese Company. That could certainly be, at some point, one of the largest commercial operations in our town. And, you know, if there was any kind of subsidies that would be available, it would be a shame just because they're, whatever it is, a quarter of a mile. I mean, the hydrant system, the village hydrant system goes down to the cheese company. And I really think, I know it wants to be compact and all that other stuff, but I think for such a small, little village to leave out potentially one of the largest commercial operations that we have out of it, I think could be not well thought about.
Yeah, I agree with Stan. And now that since they're thinking, or they are, the Brattonboro facility is closed, and they're bringing a lot of the cheese back, then that facility would be similar to what it was before Brattonboro. And you're going to have more people working there. And I agree with Stan. I think that's a mistake not to include that.
Other comments?
Well, Dave?
Yeah.
Village designation, I mean, I don't, I understand what you're trying to do, adding in the cheese plant, but a commercial operation and getting benefits, I get all that, but I'm not sure, how does that really line up with a village designation?
Again, we did go all the way to the Grafton Ponds and then to the cheese factory, and we worked our way back. They've made it clear through writing and through conversations that when you do this application, you should not make a point of extending it to grab that concrete factory that makes your company, your town, all the money, or grab this industry or that industry. I have, I will be taking a day out of work to go to this meeting as they ask. I am going to tell you, if you tell me to go down there, I'm not sure what the protocol is, they're not going to approve it. I don't think they're going to approve the one I got here, just getting down into the Wyndham Foundation. So to stretch it a quarter mile is just, you know, it just, I mean, you've got the fire department. They're like, "No way. No, no." You can see how small we got this. I'd like some guidance from the Select Board or from Bill in terms of, you know, I am one person, I'm not a dictator of the Planning Commission. This is what they've got. I can go back and say, "The Select Board disagreed. Do you want to change it?" Or do I go back and say, "It's a mandate from the Select Board that we must go down there, and I'll do whatever you want me to do in that respect." But I need some guidance on how you want me to deal with that.
I have a different question, Dave. Kind of long, it's a boundary question. What about those two old houses across from the gas station? Corsutis, it's now Rex James', and it used to be Earl Caddell's house?
Down here?
Yeah, those two houses across from the gas station. Those are historic houses. Is it the footprint of the tight little area we're after, or is it historic houses we're trying to include?
It's a tight little area that, and again, I don't have the paragraphs of verbiage that describes it in front of me, but I can get it for you, because it is rather drawn out. It is that compact area that includes a combination of government buildings and institutions, private institutions or companies, and residential. And it goes beyond that. One of the things that I said earlier, that Richard Amore, I sent him everything, and then, excuse me, he sent me back comments and questions. One of the things he did send back was in the cover letter, I had a basic introduction paragraph, "We're applying for this application," and that was the end of it. And his strong recommendation was, "You better put right up front why you want this boundary to be so big. You better explain those anchor points way outside what I'm comfortable with to proactively deal with that." So again, from their perspective, there it's been just Richard's. We're really pushing the envelope with this boundary that we have right now. But again, we can go anywhere we want with it.
If you get it approved, and it's the concise map, and it gets approved, if a landowner in the village, a homeowner in the village, comes to the Planning Commission later and said, "Hey, wait, my house was built, my house was one of the first, second homes in town, it should be on that. Can it be adjusted later on? Once you draw the map, is that the way it's always going to be, or can it be adjusted later?"
You can adjust it like everything else later, as you know, the process and bureaucracy for making changes is not a quick snap. And my guess would be that if you went back and said, "Hey, we've got changes," you better have some real strong rationale of why you're making those changes.
Have you met with people that might look at this and say, "My house should be on that"? Have you, like Rex James' house and whoever owns... Have you met, like, like Rex James's house and whoever owns Earl's house, Earl Caddell's house now? Have you met with those people and, and asked them if they're okay being left out?
We did not, because we didn't see this as a lobbying process of who gets in and who gets out, that's not the way we approached it.
Well, I, I just looked at some of those houses, they're quite historic.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Well, Dave, Dave, I have another question for you. And um, and this kind of i- is, is kind of shocking to me, I had, I had have, had the uh, uh, opportunity to have a meeting with the Wyndham Foundation on a completely uh, different subject. And I asked them, I said, how do you feel about the village designation, and they said, what? So obviously, they don't even know about this. And I asked the owner of the store, they don't know about it. So my point is, why, why isn't these businesses, don't, why don't they be, why don't you contact them to see if they have any interest in this kind of thing? It seems to me that if you're gonna, why, yeah, the largest employer in town, and they don't even know about the village designation, and whether they could even use it or not use it. I don't know what, what, how they feel about it, quite frankly.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I can't, I mean, I don't know who's gonna use this thing. And to put a program in, in, in place that nobody's gonna use, to me, is senseless. If I understand the program right, it, it, it will help, it should help the Wyndham Foundation, it should help the store, it should help businesses that, or people who wanna do certain things, it might even help the town hall. But if nobody's gonna use it, why put it in? And, and, and we, we should, you should get some input from the, from the foundation and from the, from the other businesses in town to see i- i- if, if this is something they even wanna use or, or need.
Dave, can you talk a little bit about what the pluses are for the village designation for the town? Because when I read the information, it looks like a no-brainer to me that there's a lot of benefits that can happen for the town of Grafton.
And I guess that's why I did not bother going around, again, we're all busy, we're in the middle of COVID. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't do all that. Um, i- it seems like all wins and no losses, so to go to somebody and said, here's all wins, there's no losses, what do you think? Seems silly to me, but again, if needed, I can do that. The, the benefits are listed here, without going too deep into the weeds, i- it's hard to get too much into these. A lot of them, and again, I've read these, and I go back up to the top of this, the different things, to me, it seems like, and again, I use municipal, uh, municipal planning grants as an example. It, it gives you um, higher status in those because of the point systems that they use. Um, if you wanna stake tax credit for a qualified historic rehabilitation facade or code improvements for properties that are at least thirty years old, there is tax benefits. Are you going to put a lift in the town hall someday? Are you going to put air conditioning in there someday? If so, this will benefit all of those. Now, Joe's completely right, if we do this, and then we put it on a shelf, and we don't tell anybody or let anyone know about it, it's been a huge waste of our time. Um, so, again, it's, it's one of those things that, I showed you a map, I think, of our southern Vermont neighbors. Um, you know, New Fane has two village centers. And I keep going to, it's a philosophical, in my opinion, economic thing. Every month, I put a little money aside to send to Montpelier. And if we don't have this designation, then this is money that's not gonna come back to Grafton. It's gonna go to New Fane's two village centers, it's gonna go to Saxon's River, it's gonna go to Chester, it's gonna go up um, to Londonderry, it's gonna go to South Londonderry. All of those towns have this designation and are taking advantage of the competitive advantage they have over Grafton in these opportunities. So um, again, I, I apologize for not doing a survey of the community, it just seemed like a, such a no-brainer to me, but I, it somehow we bring controversy into everything we do in Grafton, so here we are.
As I understand it, there's over a hundred and thirty-seven villages in Vermont that are designated um, with this. And I, I just wanna, I question on the designated neighborhood development areas, wouldn't the cheese company be part of that? It's within the, uh, well, the circle of the quarter mile of the village designation?
Don't know enough about this area, I've not looked into it, but it seemed to me more like residential projects, not commercial, but again, I, we've not looked into that at all yet.
Dave, it seems like um, a cover letter and, and this particular page you're showing us right here, if you were to send a cover letter on this page to the Wyndham Foundation, to, to Bob Donald, and to uh, June at the store, and maybe a couple of other key players, and, and say, if you read this, and a, a letter of your support would be helpful in our package, you know? Just, you're gonna put a package together when you send this off for approval, if they send you a letter of, of of support, that would help you, it seemed like.
Dave?
I don't wanna sound bureaucratic, but boy, there is a checklist, and I got everything in the checklist, and, and that's fluff that they didn't ask for. I, I'd recommend against it, but I can put that in, it's already about an e- it's an eighty-five page document right now, it's massive.
Dave?
Alright, okay.
But you do, you do need, Dave.
Now that, go ahead, sorry.
You do need the board's um, support.
Well, it's one of two things, let me finish up um, with Al's comment. Al, finish up your idea of sending something to the Wyndham Foundation, to June, saying, we're doing this, we wanna let you know about it, and we can't find negatives, I think, at least informing them. Um, I can ask them to vote on it, and I can come back and say, hey, you know what, none of them wants it, I don't expect that. Um, so, but, but getting the word out to these businesses goes to Joe's point, if we don't.
Right.
Use it.
Right.
I, I mean, it's not costing us anything, the time's been wasted.
Dave and, and Alan, one second. I, I, when I met with, with um, Bob Donald on Friday, um, I told him that I would have Bill Kearns send him the document there that Kathy has, and that we all have seen. And so, he's, he's got it today, so you might wanna follow up with him. But he, I, I, I did not do that with um, with June, but I did that with, with Bob, because he asked me, was there any information about it, and I said, I would have Bill Kearns forward it to you. So he has it now, and you might, you know, so you don't need to send it to him, but you, maybe a phone call to him or, or not, it would be, you know, something that you might wanna do, that's all I can say.
What, Dave, what I sent to um, Stan and to John was the village center designation program and the application. So they had all that information and all, and the information act would profit Grafton.
And that's what, that's what Bob Donald has, was exactly what Kathy sent, gave to us, so.
I sent him, I sent him Dave Culver's email that he sent to you with those links, that's what he got.
Okay. So, you know, I.
Think just, a- and I'd like to finish up real quick this outline, to make sure I cover everything, and then I, I'd like to open it back up, and you tell me where you wanna go. Um, this, again, is the map. If you are not comfortable with approving it, and will only approve it, and if we expand it, I can let Jeff know that, and we can work on that. Um, there are pictures, we've got those taken care of, we're working on all this stuff. The guy Jeff Nugent has done a variety of maps for other towns from the Wyndham Regional Commission, and so he's pretty comfortable doing all that, the photographs I just mentioned. Um, municipal plan integration, I didn't call it up, but basically, they want evidence in your town plan that you want the village center designation. Uh, we had specifically listed in the body of chapter two, page twelve, I believe, but I don't have it in front of me, um, that it is something we want, we wrote a paragraph about it, and then we put it as a recommendation at the end of that chapter. I cut and pasted all that together, when I sent that to Richard, he said, perfect, don't touch it. So again, I'll share all of this with you, and I'll explain that in just a minute, um, but that's done. Other required information, you've got things about the water system, that is not done yet. I am working on putting together a short summary dating back to nineteen ninety-two, when I found a capacity study done through a variety of things from Otter Creek to Tiambon to Stone, environmental, um, to the present um, committee, septic committee, explaining that we don't have septic or water, but we are working on it. I didn't put that in my original draft, and again, Richard said, you better put that stuff in there. Um, it'll also include a map of the fire hydrant system, and, and just a note that we have this fire hydrant system already in place. Um, a zoning map, uh, we don't have zoning as defined here. I double-checked with Bill Kearns on that, we have ordinances and, and other things, but this one, we are leaving blank unless we should put something in there for that one. Um, and the last thing is a, a map of the National Historic Registry, which I got from the National, um, the, excuse me, the Grafton Historic Society. And so that's in there. When all of these are put together, they require one single PDF. What I planned on doing, and again, it's one of those things, is this has been our plate, I've been on the board five years, it was one of the first things they talked about, is we gotta get this done now. I had the sense always that, boy, the select board wanted us to get this done, now I'm starting to understand that wasn't accurate, and I apologize. Um, but when this is all done, I put together a single PDF. My goal was, if I could get you to agree to it, would be to send that out as soon as I get it together for your review. On August eleventh, there is a planning commission meeting, it would be sent out to them before that as well, for their review. If we could approve it, the planning commission on August eleventh, and if you have no concerns, then on August seventeenth, there's a select board meeting. I would love to see a unanimous vote and a signing of that last document, item number two, authorization from the town. Um, and then I'll edit the PDF, add that near the very top of it, right after the cut of your letter. If that could happen, September fifth is the deadline, it's a monthly deadline early in the month, so they can talk at their monthly meeting, which is later in the month. Um, if I could get it to them by September fifth, September twenty-eighth is their meeting, I would go up to Montpelier if it's live, or I would Zoom or Microsoft Meets or whatever with them, if it's in that format, and we would talk about it, if things worked out well, they approve it, I'm hopeful for that, but I can't promise anything, and it's, it's a done deal. Now, that said, we don't have it now, you know, if things come up, then, you know, we don't have opportunity to add to this, but it can be as long, we don't have to do it at all, we can wait until town meeting in next March, um, because it does say authorization from town or village select boards. So you guys don't have to be the one to approve it, we can go to, I think, Joe, you recommended having a town meeting about it. And, and again, I don't have money to organize that, but I assume you guys might be able to find that.
No, no, I, I didn't say a town meeting, Dave, I said, what, what I would like to see ha- happen is that there is a, a, a public hearing, which the select board or the planning commission could, could, could do, similar to what we have done, what, what was done with the town plan. And you could make the same presentation to whoever wants to come, and get a sense of the community um, before I would wanna vote for it, that, that was my original intent. Now, I know we have an issue here with, with COVID and, and having face-to-face meetings, but that was my original intent when um, Lisa first brought it to the, the board over a year ago, and they wanted some kind of a letter that, that they could, you, I, I don't remember the exact terminology. But that's my only issue, that I think, we don't need a town meeting, what we need is a hearing, a, a public hearing, that's what I would like to see happen, personally.
I'm gonna exit out of shared screen unless there's anything else you want to see of the stuff I've shared?
No.
Um, one, one minor comment, Dave?
Yup.
When, when you make that map, um, I'm looking at it on my phone, so the, it's not a very big image. But when I look at the legend, um, I, I've always found it good practice to put the date. Put a date, is there a date on there?
I, well, you got one June twentieth in small letters right there, I guess.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, now that I blow that up, I can see it, okay.
Get your spectacles on for that one.
Huh?
Get your s- spectacles on for that one, it's in there.
Well, yeah, I, I blew it up, I, I can see it now, so, yeah, okay.
Can I stop sharing the screen?
Yeah.
Fine with me.
And we're back again. Whoop. Again, I, I would encourage you.
Fixed everything.
Think about approving it, but i- if you're gonna have a town hearing, I guess I'd ask Bill the expenses on that. We don't have money in our budget, obviously, so it's something you gotta come up with.
Well, there's really very little expense to have a town meet, town, actually town hearing.
Well, i- if we're gonna have a town hearing currently, isn't it going to be a virtual town meeting?
I guess so, I, that's the only way I know it can be done.
Not much expense to that.
Still gotta warn it though, don't you? Yeah, but fifteen day warning or?
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Uh, could I re- could I recommend the following, a- a- again, maybe there's, maybe it has less impact. Our agenda for August is already full. I was hoping to get this done, but it looks like it's not gonna happen then. Would it make an, just as much sense if we're gonna do a Zoom meeting anyways, to dedicate the September planning commission meeting, put an advertisement in the Grafton News that we're going for this, here's what it's about, please attend, and we'll have a question and answer service for it? Or do you wanna have a special town hearing on it? And I don't know what the laws and protocols are in terms of that piece of it, because I, it's different.
I would just, I would, if I, if I argue, I'd just make sure everybody was notified of your August eleventh meeting. And then if the select board wanted to, they could attend that and so on, and then have a public hearing virtual, prior to the select board meeting, to see if there's any more additional comments, because if, 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 if your meeting is well attended, everybody will, there's no really reason to have a, uh, to worry about it in another meeting, just have the, have the, if it's well received then, then the select board will know that, and have a public hearing, they can approve it or disapprove it at that meeting, and just be done with it on the seventeenth of Aug.
But you would have to, but you would have to, Dave, make a public, not so that everybody knows who's interested in this thing would attend this virtual meeting, it, it can't be, can't be in secret, I'm, you know, I'm throwing terminology, but the town needs to know.
The meeting yet.
No, but the, the town needs to know that if you have any interest, you go on the Zoom thing on, on the eleventh. And like Bill said.
Dave, with, Dave, with all due respect, he's, he's talking, both you and I, we both have the same problem. We notify everybody, we found out we didn't notify anybody, right? I mean, that's the problem, so what would, what, what it would be is, get that, get it noticed to me, I can send it to the Grafton residents, who will then send it to three hundred more people and everybody in the world to know about, you're having a meeting on, on, on uh, August eleventh with regard to this.
And I think.
That would work for you.
I think we're still in, we're still in, in um, in time to put it into the Grafton News as well.
Right. I have an article already written, but have not sent out, um, as I think you know.
Wendy's still on to.
Okay, um, the, her due date is Friday, is what, I contacted her a while ago, I wanted to make sure I met it. Um, as you know, and I don't wanna shift the subject, again, it's your meeting, you tell me where you wanna go. Uh, we have somebody from the Wyndham Regional to come and talk about land use. Now, he's gonna be there all night, he can also talk about village center if you want. I mean, he's, he's the chief planner there and has been for a long time. Um, I don't have anything about village center in there, because.
Wendy, you hit a button, Wendy, Wendy Martin, you hit a button, you're sharing your screen with. Wendy?
To her Facebook.
There you go.
There you go.
We got some funny-looking things, but I think, are we back on?
Yeah, but I mean.
Would, would you, I mean, it's, it's, again, I, I.
I, I think, I think Bill, wait, Bill has it, Bill has the right idea. If, if we can, if you can get the word out to, to the, to the businesses in town, to the people in town, to go virtual on the, your August eleventh meeting, and you give this kind of dog and pony show again, and, and if, if there is no issue there, then, then maybe there's, you don't need to have a public hearing.
Right.
And, and, and maybe the select board will then go ahead and, and approve it, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just giving you hypotheticals. And maybe the Select Board will then go ahead and approve it. I'm not speaking for the board. I'm just giving you hypotheticals.
Who would decide if we got enough input?
Well, we hear, we hear from residents. If the residents say we don't want it, or the residents say, what is it? Who knows? I mean, you know, obviously, if you have a public hearing, you raise your hand and people speak, just like they did at the town plan. Who liked it? Who didn't? That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for some comment from the village.
If you get some input from the Wyndham Foundation from the market that's positive, or at least not negative to it, then the board will know. But no one knows how they feel. No one knows how anybody feels.
Yeah.
Because no one, no one, no one knows about it. That's all.
Understood. I guess I'd like to hear from the Select Board, not just you, to make sure that's consensus from everybody.
I think if you give people the advertised well, the opportunity, and if nobody says anything, then you say they don't have a problem, we move forward.
Yeah, I think the bottom line.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I think the bottom line is that the town of Grafton or the Select Board is shooting themselves in the foot if they don't agree with village designation, because you're losing all your opportunities for the grants and the improvements. There's no negatives, that I see. And I think the Planning Commission and Dave have done a tremendous job in trying to get this through. And I think what he wanted tonight was our okay.
Well, John. I think, I think everybody's.
Said anything.
They asked everybody in the direction of making it happen. Isn't that a form of saying we're in favor?
I guess what I'm thinking I'll do, because, again, you know, everything's together, and this is a suggestion. We have a meeting on August 11th. The primary time of that is going to be dealt with land use. But we do have time, and we can extend it past the nine o'clock hours. Our, we're going to start at seven, because we've got some people working on the Planning Commission and can't get there before that. I will finish, I will edit the letter that I've written to the Grafton News and add the Village Center piece to it. Let's say we're going to talk about two topics on that August 11th. Al, I told you, the letters of endorsement from towns, or excuse me, from businesses are not needed from the ACCD. But I think I'll ask for them to address those letters to you guys, because it sounds like you need them in order to move forward. So I'll see about getting those. I don't know if I can, and I'll, I'll tell you what, I'm going to show up at your August 17th meeting with as much ammo as I can put together, with the hope that you vote unanimously and approve it. And if you still want a town hearing, then we can go that way. I just strongly disagree with that approach, but.
Just a little comment, Dave. At your 11th meeting, if you're telling, if you're telling the board right now or the people that they have to wait till eleven, nine o'clock at night to discuss the village plan, that's my bedtime. I have to tell you, most people are not going to be around at 11 o'clock, at nine o'clock at night, discussing Village Center. I can tell you that.
I agree.
So if you're going to do it at that time, to me, it's a waste. But that's just my opinion.
Okay, this is, this is my concern personally. Who owns the most property in the village? And what is the other business besides them in the village? And, and we haven't heard from them. We don't care. If, if, if that's all we heard, we don't care. The worst thing the Select Board could do, Kathy, would be to approve this thing and then find out there is not, there is a major concern by these people that we never saw among all these benefits. That's the problem. If they don't see it, then fine.
That's my concern. I have nothing against it. I just want to know why we're doing it, and if the businesses don't really care, and then nobody's going to take advantage of it, you can have all the grants that you want. What good is it? You've just created another, another thing that you got to do. And I distrust the government, quite frankly, particularly Vermont government, after what I have seen.
As a reminder, you and I are the government, just to clarify some things. Just a reminder, you and I are the government.
No, I'm talking about the state government.
Yeah. And the problem, the problem is, the reason I have that, that slant on it is I've worked in government in Vermont too long to not to be suspicious when everything is good. When they say there isn't any downside for doing this, then I get suspicious, and I don't know what that is. I looked at the thing. I don't see any, I don't see any downsides to it at all. I agree with Kathy. I agree with you. But let's say the business one, they say, yeah, it's fine.
I would just like to hear from at least the businesses in town, hey, this is a great thing. Go ahead and do it.
Would you like me to invite Richard Amore to your August 17th meeting?
Sure.
Why not?
Well, I can't, I can't speak for them. I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, I think it's okay, you know, but I would really like to hear from the Wyndham Foundation. I'd like to hear from the MKT and any, maybe the church, because I know the church is interested in doing some things. And see if everybody's in favor. I just, I just need to hear reassurance that what we're doing is something that people are going to be happy for.
Joe, can you, can you meet with Don, Robert Donald? And ask him if he's had a chance to look at it, or give him a call, see if he's had a chance to look at that document that Bill sent him?
Well, Bill sent me a copy of the email that he sent to Don, to Bob Donald, because I had requested it. And I sent, I sent it back to Bill and Don. I said, I would be interested to know your feelings of that. Let me know. So I've already done that.
All right.
And I think what, if it's okay with the board, I think Bill should send it on to the church and on to MKT and any other business that we could think, and let's get, let's do the same thing that we did to Bob Donald and have them make a response to the board. Okay? All right, so can we move on?
To avoid duplicating efforts, I will not be contacting them then?
Well, somebody should contact them. If you want to do it, that's fine. If we want to, you want.
They don't want to double our efforts. You just said you guys are doing it. That's fine. I'll take it off.
I only did it with Bob Donald because I was curious, and I asked him, and he said to me, would you please send me the information? And I did.
Yep.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll do that, Dave.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Dave's looking for our approval. Why don't we solve the problem for ourselves so we can give them our approval?
So does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Yes. I will continue to put the document together, and once I get into a single document format, because that's the requirement, one PDF, I do plan on sending it to all of you for your preview. So at the appropriate time, we can have discussion, and I want you guys to have as much time as you can to look at it, because there's lots of little pieces that need to be discussed possibly.
All right, so give us an update about the town plan, because we were promised that we were going to deal with the maps, we were going to deal with some of these issues, and it's been a long, long time, and nobody's heard anything.
I guess I'd like to ask you, Joe, who made this promise? Because it certainly was not me. You've used that multiple times in public. I got to call you out on it.
I thought I heard that you got the word from people, and the Planning Commission was going to make that their first agenda to deal with that. That's what I hear.
That's different than a promise.
If I'm wrong, then, you know, then please, maybe I'm wrong.
I just called you on it, and you are. So let's be clear on that, because I hear you keep saying that, and that makes me uncomfortable. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, on the town plan.
But the problem is, David, there are people who are, who are developing in those red lands that if they go back to Act 250 and the Select Board decides to write on behalf of all the residents of this town, we have to tell them, no, you can't develop there. And I'm talking in particular Turner Hill.
I'm aware.
We'd have to tell them, okay. Okay, that is the problem with that map. But if the Planning Commission doesn't think that that is important to do, then that's fine. You can do it later.
All right. Bill, thanks. This is what I thought we communicated to you. If I did not communicate it completely accurately, I apologize. The Planning Commission seems to have consensus that this is what the message is. It has been radically screwed up because of COVID. The original plan was to deal with the change that Al pointed out. And again, you know, it's been a year now that Al pointed that out, and I am in agreement as an individual. And we, as a planning commission, have had a nonofficial consensus-style vote that yes, that red has to go. Now, that is our opinion. We also have the town hearing in January, and I heard other opinions, some of which were pushing, get rid of all the green, of all the shades, make one giant white map, as an example. So if we're going to edit the map, we can just edit it and do that, or we can step back and say, hey, community, let's get a map that everybody has consensus on, so we can avoid that 96 to 66 vote. Now, that may not happen. I understand that. The original plan was, in April, we had a live panel discussion with people from Wyndham Regional Commission, Act 250, the various organizations that are influences or forces on the map and the rules and the things, because there is a lot of constraints, remember? It's not just something we just throw together. As one person put, oh, we noticed your house, Dave, is on the other side of the road, so you must have better, you did that on purpose. Well, that was rather insulting, but it's not the reason we put it where we put it. So anyways, COVID-19 came up. That had to get canceled. You're right. We didn't accomplish a lot during the first month. I can only talk to myself. Very bluntly, Select Board, this is not my first priority in life. I got many priorities above the Planning Commission, and I put them all above it for about two months. Any questions on that? Because I'm hearing, Dave, we're doing a lot of work, and you guys aren't doing nothing. Sorry. All right? I hate to vent, but I don't need to see that kind of crap. All right? We got the Village Center going. We only meet once a month. I'm not going to call special meetings. My committee right now is incredibly burned out from life. They all work for a living. They get home late at night. They don't have time to do all the other stuff, so we're trying to get it done as best we can. Me, I got another three weeks to go, and then I'm going to hit the road running, and my life is going to step back in terms of Planning Commission. This is the only time I can do stuff is during the summer. We decided the best thing to do is not try to get all the people that were coming to the meeting together, but to at least get one person that can globally talk about land use and to talk about the proposed map, and to talk about Exit 171, and Act this, and Act that, and at least a knowledgeable person to our August 11th meeting. That person is, I don't know if his title's Assistant Director, he used to be the chief planner of the Wyndham Regional Foundation, John Bennett. The format, if you saw the email, is we tried to write a an outline of what John should talk about. The problem we run into is, and I really saw it at the January meeting, we're getting questions from people saying, what is this town plan, and what are you doing to our zoning? We got some people that didn't know we had a town plan with questions. Then we got others that want some in-depth technical explanation of the 20-foot border around all of our streams, and who wrote BioFinder, and where is the resource for that, and they want upper level. So our final decision was, and John has agreed to it, this will be an open forum. If, and hopefully you will, the five of you show up, you will get first option to ask any questions you want. Now, if you're already set and saying, no, just get rid of the red and you're happy, then, you know, that's fine also. But he will come and he'll talk about that. From there, I guess I need some guidance. Again, I have all sorts of powers here. I get to write an agenda. Beyond that, I don't have a lot of power. You can't give me a directive and then go back to them and say, like it or not, you guys, this is what we're going to do. You can give me some suggestions, I think, and I don't know if you can give me directives or not on this. As I see it, I guess what I would like from you as a board tonight, and I've got them written down here, is at least a directive that you vote on would be ideal. Option number one is to just change the map now. We could do that at the next meeting. We could vote on it. We could start the process. That's done. There are other problems besides the map in the town plan. If you read the education chapter, which is the one I bring up that's so blatant, it talks about an education system that does not exist in this town. To me, if we're going to have a town meeting and a town hearing, I would like to fix everything. And during the summer, I've been making edits. I've not shared them with anyone. I have a proposal, but it's not done yet. I don't know when it's going to be done. We can either vote to just get rid of the red and then have another town hearing five, six months later. We can vote to get rid of the red and just say, you know what? Yeah, the plan's got all sorts of messed-up stuff, but it's only eight years, so just let it slide, and in eight years, we'll fix it all then. That's technically an option. What is your preference and how you want me to approach this, folks?
Well, I guess nobody's speaking. I will.
I'd like to see. Let somebody else go.
All right.
Oh, go ahead. You, Alan, you go first.
To me, the, the maps trouble me the most. And the idea of the different land classifications, this is not unique habitat over here. There may be parts of it that are, but the paintbrush was too big. If you're going to put unique habitats, use a one-inch brush, not a four-inch brush. So I'd like to see the maps fixed.
Do you mean immediately, and just get rid of the red, or get rid of the green, or what do you mean fixed?
Well, I'd like them to be more accurate or portray more what the land really is, or what it's potential for.
You got to give me something more than that, because this came right off of BioFinder. It's not something we just got a marker out and drew. It's layers that were turned on and off based on their, their information. So you may not like their information, but that's where it came from. We can, we can draw any map we want. We can have a map that just says white. We can have a map that can draw sparkle. We can do whatever we want, but I need some guidance, not just go make a map and then bring it back and hope you get it right. Tell me what you're talking about. In fact, ideally, draw the map and give it to us. Please.
My feeling is there's really no difference in the land on the east side of Route 35 and the west side of 35. Granted, there's more development in the Fisher Hill, and, you know, that area, there's more, currently more development. But as far as the potential of the land and same animals live over there that live over here, I just, I just don't see that there should be two different land classifications on one side of Route 35 and the other.
All I can say is I had to draw the line somewhere, and that's where they drew the line. It wasn't me.
So can that be changed, Dave?
Yep. Say that again?
I, I, I don't want to be disrespectful, Dave, but when they draw the line, bothers me, is like, this is Grafton's town plan, not their town plan. And.
Again, draw a map, Al. Send it to me.
All right, listen. Dave, I agree 100% with Alan. The maps, that was the thing that troubled me the most. Whether the school is accurate or not, if you change the plan tomorrow in three weeks, there would be an inaccuracy again. So you can't change the plan every five minutes. Yes, I would not like to see it go eight years before you change some of the stuff, like in past plans, but the maps, to me, is the essential. I don't have a problem if the board doesn't. The board could then put together what our idea of, what the board's idea of the map. But that's, I'm not sure we're allowed to do that. That's really not our job.
Your community members are absolutely allowed to do that. I am.
Sure enough. The Select Board is, and the Planning Commission, the way they operate is very defined in the law. So. So, uh, if you, maybe you weren't around, Dave, but um, there was a prior Select Board Chair. He was gonna write the 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 uh, the plan and that was a no-no. Um, cause he was gonna write it and 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 then send it to the Plan Commission and everybody balked and got nervous about it. So, you know, let's, we gotta be careful here about what we should and what we shouldn't do. That's my, that's my speech.
Well, I don't know how we got off on this subject anyway. I don't see anything on the agenda talking about the the maps.
It is. Annual Town Plan Critical Resource Areas, it's in there. No development, whatever. It's in there, Stan.
On on our agenda?
Yep. It's in there.
The, but anyway, um, I it's 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 a deal. I think that the 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 Planning Commission has to deal with it when they, when they get to the point. And uh, I know that it was on a lot of people's minds and that there's a awful lot going on.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that, you know, it's gonna happen when it happens. I think we should move on and go to the next subject.
Well, the purpose, the purpose was just to get an update of where the, where the we were, Dave. That was the only purpose here. No, it was no accusations or whatever. It was to see where we stand. That was what the whole discussion was.
I I guess I've come across some emails that had some accusations, so I'm a little bit touchy.
Well, maybe, maybe it was a personal one, but certainly it wasn't the board.
Yeah, it's all public information. So, yeah, it was a board member, but I won't go into it here.
Can we move on?
Okay. Is everybody ready to move on? And and then let the Planning Commission deal with the maps, I guess. That's the, that's the 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 end of it.
So at August eleventh meeting, my final comment is we are going to be talking in an open forum. It is a meeting, but we want an open forum to talk about the town plan specifically about land use and the maps. I know you keep saying maps and I don't wanna get wonky, but you can't change a map without changing Chapter Two. They're connected together. Um, you know, the land use chapter defines the map. So when you say map, I assume you mean both because you can't do one without the other. We'll also be talking about the Village Center designation that night as well. If you've got questions about the map, Al, why does it go up Route one twenty-one? I'd love to have those in writing ahead of time so that we can help organize John in a way that is most, most efficient to all of you folks. All right. It it can be random and he'll go all over wherever rabbit hole you want to take him down. I don't know that's gonna be as as valuable as you guys putting together some questions ahead of time. But tha- that's up to you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Village Water Quality, which is the email from the state.
Yeah, there was some, well, you can read the letter. Her concern, her question is, are we doing anything? Because if so, then then they would uh, ask that we um, if if we were close to to starting a project to do water or sewer or whatever, then they would know that possibly they could piggyback on us to fix their well issue at the school. That's what that letter is. That's what that email is about. That email is not about, you guys gotta do this water thing so that we can fix the problem at the school. Okay? No, it's it's if you're gonna do it, then maybe we can use whatever you do to fix the problem between the two houses that have a problem. The school and the house that has a problem. So the question is, uh, how do you want to respond to that or are you waiting or what what do you? I I don't know what you want.
We don't have to do anything.
We don't have to do anything, Bill. I mean, I've been in preparation for our next Water Commission meeting. I have spoken with the elementary school to understand to what extent they want to participate in the surveying that we do for a wastewater management system. I, they hadn't heard from Kimberly in months and then it's coincidental that today she writes to them. It's it's very coincidental. So anyway, um, we will definitely have the elementary school in the loop on our planning. And so I I'm happy to write Kimberly back and make sure she knows that uh, they'll be in the loop.
Okay, so that's, that's. That would be all that's needed.
That's all we need. All right. The next one is the cemetery land.
Um, I have, I have something on that.
Okay, cause.
I have something new on that just tonight.
Okay, cause I talked to Bill at noon time and there was nothing new, so I guess there's something new now. Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, I got a call from um, Streeter. Streeter with the, uh, Mrs. Streeter, apparently.
Middletown Cemetery.
Yeah, Middletown Cemetery wrote, uh, her son is living in the house now, the son Junior. Saban Junior is living there and uh, we could talk to him, but uh, she said that um, they had talked a long time ago with uh, John about it and looked at the southern boundary. The southern boundary to most of our minds would be the back boundary. Not where it goes down to the creek on the on the west, not the east side where it's forested, not the north side, which is the road, but that southern boundary. That's what she's talking about. And they would be willing to give it to us.
Wow.
Uh, they would like to talk about it and see if that's what we want to do. Uh, I I think they would be open if you wanted to add a little bit more to the east and you'll go around and pick that up. Because that, if you walk back there, that cuts off fairly sharply at an angle. So if you're looking at it from the cemetery, this side over here by the creek cuts across short. So there's, you you know, things to discuss with her, but but she gave me the phone number, which is the best way to contact her. And uh, and thought we could uh, just talk anytime. Mr. Saban is not doing well. He doesn't, they don't get up here very often.
All right, so Stan, do you want, Stan, do you wanna go, you and I go up with Walter and take a look at it?
You're not on, Stan. Stan, you're not on. You turned yourself off or something.
I did. I was trying to, I was trying to tell my dog had to, it was time to go outside.
Stan.
Yeah, I can.
You and I, Walter, wanna make an appointment to go up there and see what's available?
Yeah.
Since we've been working on it anyway?
Yep.
Okay.
And I told them that that we would do this. I told them we would do the subdivision. I didn't say that to her tonight, but in the letters, I told everybody, the town would do the subdivision. They bury that bur- that bear that burden if they wanted to give it, so.
So Stan, why, why don't we, uh, you email me what your schedule is or I can email me. I'm pretty much uh, open except for tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I don't know what Walter is, so we need, we need to get Walter and and you and I can go up there and spend a half an hour, just to see if it's worth it. Okay?
And I'll get ahold of Walter and and I'll get you.
Okay, perfect. All right. Um, the school, um.
But but as far as the other properties, I've not heard from anybody. I've not heard from Mueller either.
All right. Everybody knows that that we lost in the in the courts for the school. Uh, so the reason why I put it on there, cause I don't know, maybe Jack would come. I would just, we have an advisory committee that we, I guess, elected or appointed or whatever. And I was just curious, uh, and I thought the board should know, what are they gonna do now? There, are they gonna fight it? Are they gonna try to withdraw? Some towns are withdrawing, trying to withdraw. It was just on there so that we would have a an idea of what their thinking is. That's that's the reason it's there.
And I know Jack spoke about that lawsuit. Um, I think he was gonna get more information, but right now the task force is working on reopening the school.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll just see what happens.
No, that's not what I would like you to do. Do you want the school committee to see what is going on and what they think should be done? Or do you want you guys only to deal with it?
I think the school committee should deal with it.
That's my thought. You have a school committee. Let them work on and find out what's going on.
Well, there's several committees working. You have an advisory committee, but you also have some task force working on basically reopening the school, cause I'm part of that.
Well, I wasn't talking about reopening, Kathy. I'm talking about what are they gonna do eventually with this, with this um, merger? Are they gonna take further action or are they going to, cause there are some towns that started to withdraw. And I don't know where, I don't know where Grafton sits. Are they just gonna say it's over? I think we should know that. That's all.
No, I think, I think Jack was discussing that issue with other folks, but there's no, nothing's been determined at this point. From the last school board meeting that I attended, which was last week.
Okay, so do we wanna, do we wanna get in touch with Jack or we just wait until we hear from him? What's your pleasure?
Yeah, I think we get.
Have Bill send Jack an email and just ask him for an update. Where, what's next?
Yes.
Okay. That all right with everybody?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I think you're kicking the can down the road, but I'll, but that's.
That's why I would say, I I I agree with that. Um, we have no tree warden volunteers, so I think we can skip that. And unless you have something that you wanna deal with, Alan, or anybody. Okay, Wendy, you're on with the concert.
Yeah, I think you've addressed um, a lot of this already during the coronavirus part of the meeting. But it it really had to do with, I I watched the meeting, I was at the meeting actually last time and then I watched it again today. And at the end of it, it did seem like, you know, the concert was going to happen and then all of a sudden it wasn't. So I just wondered from your point of view as a board, I mean, what what happened? Was there a discussion about it? Were there concerns that you, I mean, Bill talked about going to the, going to Keith and asking him about it? Um, because I, you know, I just wanna know what you, what you had done, if anything.
Well, I I think what, what, we, we didn't have any, any resolution. Um, Bill was working on trying to get the states, the state, the states' health people to give us some guidance of, is this okay to do and whatever? And we never really heard back from the state. And then.
So why, why was, why was Bill doing that, I guess?
Cause we, we asked him to to do, see what the regulations were, if it was legal, trying to get a determination.
You asked, you, but you didn't ask him at the meeting, I guess. That's my, that was my question.
Well, I think we talked about it at the meeting, didn't we? Well, I know I did. I know it was in there that we talked about the state hadn't responded. And then that nothing was ever done because it was canceled and that stopped.
Okay, then I guess my question is, so you know that the governor had come out with guidance on that, about a hundred and fifty people, all those rules. That was kind of referenced in Suzanne's spreadsheet. So I guess I don't understand why Bill would be making that call when the governor, she was that guy.
Because that isn't the, the, his guidance. You guys are skipping the whole guidance of Addendum sixteen, I think it was. You are to have no large gatherings. And then it goes, says parties, something of weddings, parties and funerals of a hundred and fifty people or less can be done. My question is, is how do you limit on the grass at the library in the middle of the village that has no limits? Uh, how do you limit, after you get your hundred and fifty people in there, how do you limit that concert to a hundred and fifty people? And if you cannot, i- is that, and this is what I've asked an ACCD, cause they really write the things. The governor just signed them. I asked ACC and Health Department, if they, if they do not, uh, if they hold it in an open seating, does that, is that against the governor's thing, get, uh, all gatherings are to be, not not happen this this summer? Or does it, or is this considered one of those venues that you could limit to a hundred and fifty and it's fine? But if it was in the church, it wouldn't have been a problem, cause you gotta build it.
Yeah, well, it would have been a problem because inside, inside is a problem. I'm not gonna, I don't wanna debate this right now. My question has to do with you doing something that wasn't mentioned at the meeting. It was not mentioned at the meeting. Why?
Do you think I only do what what is mentioned at the meeting? Do you think I said I'd only do what's mentioned at the meeting?
Okay, I just, my concern is transparency. It has to do with the board making these decisions and doing things outside of a meeting.
They didn't make any decisions. There was no decision made. We were looking for information from the state as whether or not we should take action and and but not, but this was, this was with Joe and I looking at the, at the thing and saying, there is an issue here. Let's get it resolved by the state. If they had written back and said, no, that's fine, then we would have said, now we understand that ACCD says that type of limitation of a hundred and fifty people, even though it's in an open setting, is okay. But we never got.
Let me be clear.
We never got any answer from them.
There was never an answer and it's when, when somebody told, I don't know who, somebody told Bill or somebody told somebody that the the concert was was not going to happen, then there was just, we never bothered to continue finding whether or not it was okay.
I found out on Facebook. I think it was probably your Facebook. That's what I found out.
Set that aside. So then you you also do this for the eighty people who show up at a wedding at Riverledge Farm? You, do you do this for the cavern when they're having weddings? Do you, I guess?
No, because I I don't do it because they, they, they have a way of limit, they have a way of limit, limiting those. Okay, this had no limit to it.
They had tickets.
Not according to the way it was.
Not under the mission.
Wendy, Wendy, the way it was presented to us that night, there were no tickets. There was really no plan. You, Suzanne recites all that plan. We asked, there wasn't any plan. They didn't have a plan. They didn't have anything that night. Okay? And so there's no way to limit, when you say, everybody in the world can come, but the first hundred and fifty that show up, that's gonna be it. That's, that's how it was presented.
Right.
That's how it was presented.
And the only, and the only thing.
It was afterwards that they talked about having tickets.
And we wanted to find out whether that was.
Um, Bill Kearns, excuse me, I need to break in here. I was at the Select Board meeting to specifically ask you how, and you can go back and this is a matter of public record, to ask you how you would like me to present our phase reopening plan to you and our buildings and grounds use plan with the requirements for COVID. You told me as a Select Board that you didn't want to see it. I told you that I had spoken to ACCD about the concert and V L T C and they had called me back. I don't, I wanna be done with this meeting at this point, but I cannot let such blatant inaccuracies stand. I can share, screen share with you if you'd like, the response that I got from ACCD. They did come, you're interrupting me, Joe Polio. Stop. This, it's unbelievable, the things that you say. You can go back and look at the meeting that you were at. We offered you the plans. I told you, everybody that I talked to, it was on record. You could have come to me one more time and talked to me and asked to see exactly what I received from ACCD, or you could have waited until you got in touch with them. It doesn't make any difference at this point because Lisa herself decided to cancel the concert. But this was handled very, very, very poorly by your organization because we spent, and my board spent a great deal of time debating this and talking to agencies. You can sit here as a Select Board and say that you don't trust our state government and that you have no faith in them, which I heard you say earlier in the meeting. You can go ahead and say that in the middle of a global pandemic, but I and my organization is looking to our state government, which I think is handling things exceptionally well compared to other places in the country. And that's the what I go by. And furthermore, the Select Board has absolutely no say over what happens on the library lawn. Now, do we want to work in collaboration with the rest of the town in terms of use? Absolutely, which is why I was there to tell you about changes in our plan. If you don't wanna see them and you don't wanna follow proper process, that is your responsibility. It is not our responsibility if you're not following proper procedure and process. We did, and that is all that I have to say about this. I feel that you have acted really poorly.
Are you done, Michelle?
I am done and thank you, Joe.
So, so let's understand something here. Before the, before anything was said, there was a, there was a rumor, there was a discussion that this was gonna take place. I put it on the agenda to discuss it. And that's when you came in and explained the whole situation. But prior to me putting it on the agenda, there was no explanation by anybody.
Joe, where did you put it on the agenda?
Now.
No, go ahead.
The only thing that we did was in anticipation of the meeting that was gonna happen last month. We, we, I asked Bill to check the law to see whether or not this was permissible, that it fall under the guidance. That's all we did.
Okay, I have another question then. If that happened, as you said, and then Bill directed Lisa Kissel to come to the library board and talk to them about it at a board meeting, then why wouldn't your organization, if you're talking about the last board meeting, because I didn't see it on the agenda, V S O concert, I didn't see use of the library lawn on your agenda. I only brought it up under COVID because I. I only brought it up under COVID, because I had, I've been directed by the Department of Libraries and by VOSHA that when we come up with plans to, as a matter of open communication in the town, to share our plans with you. That's why I was there to share them during, when the COVID, that's when I spoke. When on your COVID agenda, I saw nothing about the library lawn on your agenda, about a V S O concert. If you did in fact, Joe, direct Bill Kearns to put it on the last agenda, I didn't see it there. And that means that you had a discussion about it and you didn't come to the library board or the library board meeting at all to share your view. Also, I'm puzzled about why it would take you so long to hear from the state when I heard for them, from them within two days.
Well, Michelle, the agenda was already posted, so it was discussed under the COVID or under other business. It was, it was not, the agenda was already, was already posted. And I have to tell you, I don't know whether about, about Lisa Kissel.
Yes, because I brought it up, Joe.
Okay.
Because I brought it up.
I don't know about Lisa Kissel, but the SLUT board did not authorize anybody go talk to Lisa Kissel.
I don't understand what you, what you mean by that, but it doesn't matter.
Bill told Lisa Kissel to go talk to the library board. The SLUT board didn't tell.
I have an email, I have an email from Lisa stating that Bill Kearns told her to come talk to us. Now, maybe she did, maybe she didn't. There's nothing that I can do to prove that, but that was why she was at our board meeting, because she said that Bill had told her that it was the purview of the library to decide use of the lawn.
That is correct. Bill, Bill said.
That was a long time before our meeting. A long time before our meeting.
Of course.
Bill told her that we have no jurisdiction on the library. They, we do not own the property. Go talk to the library. That's all he did.
Yes, which is exact, well, you, you just said a moment ago that even before your last meeting, you had sent Bill to the state to talk to ACCD about the possibility of a concert. So I'm confused. You can understand why I'm confused, but you can go back and look over the meeting. I'm, I'm just gonna click off now. I've really said all that I have to say. If you want to ask me any questions, I'm still here, but there are, there were so many inaccuracies that were just stated that I needed to come on.
Uh, I, I just want to speak up about one thing that, uh, Bill said. Um, and I, I beg to disagree, Bill. I can send an email to the select board.
No, I'm gonna reread, I'm gonna reread the minute, I'm gonna re, hear the minutes and I will, and I will put them down word for word, because I don't remember her saying that she had any plan whatsoever. So i- if I'm wrong, then you'll see it in an email to everybody. I don't want to hear about that to the rest of it.
No, no, I, I am going to say, I'm gonna, uh, actually, uh, stand up for what I, the analysis I did, which is stating the three policies that the library had come up with.
If we had known about all those policies and all those steps we had taken that night at the meeting, I would not have gone any further with it, because I would have known that ACCD was fully complied with. We were told, no one was talked to and there really wasn't any plan. And okay, well, maybe we'll change our mind about the amount of people coming or how they're gonna get in, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I will listen to the minutes again and do, do.
Please do. And I'm, and meanwhile, I'm gonna send an email with all of the attachments of the plans that had been put together prior to the select board and that were referenced by Michelle in her presentation to the select board.
Which you told me you didn't want. That's on the record as well.
Look.
Okay, listen, we'll, 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 Bill will go look at the minutes again and we will figure out what happened.
No, I, I will type them word for word.
And, and we will see what happens, so.
My, my confusion has to do with Bill telling Lisa Kissel that it was not the select board's purview and it was the library board. And that's correct, right?
When she called me, she called me and asked me if she needed the select board permission to, to use the library lawn. I said the library lawn belonged to that. I didn't say for 150 people in the concert and, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And here's the point it was.
I understand that.
It is the use of the library lawn. It is nothing, you don't own.
Right, so then why would you, then why would you be doing more research if it wasn't up to the select board?
Because the health of the community could be, if, if, I'll use jester again. If something like that happened here, then the health of the community is at stake. The residents of the community's health is at stake.
But with, what, one of the, one of the, one of the obligations of the select board, um, among, among, among the, the budgets and the roads and all, is to, is to make sure that the town is viable, safe, whatever terminology you want to use. And, um, and we had no jurisdiction over whether the concert should or shouldn't take place. The only concern was, is that it, was it gonna have any major impact on the town? That's the whole story. We weren't against the board. The board didn't say that we don't want it. We didn't say anything else. We were just concerned that we wanted to double check to make sure that there wasn't something gonna happen that was against law, against the whatever, and was gonna put the town in jeopardy. That was the only question. That's it. That's how, that's how the whole thing came. And we never did get the real answer, I'm sorry, from the, from the state. And it was, it became a moot point, because the concert was canceled.
Well, it's not really a moot point, because if the select board wants to be proactive with respect to public safety and large gatherings, then you need to, and, and, and as, as representatives of the town, you need to decide, do we want to have a policy in Grafton about whether we have gatherings of 150 people or not? I mean, it can't just be episodic decisions. It has to be business.
Sue, listen, Sue, let's be realistic here. Nobody is gonna worry about whether there's 10 people or 150 people. Nobody cares about the concert that takes place in, in the foundation. When, when things are normal, you go to a football game, you go here. This is, these are troubled times. This is a different situation. This has nothing to do with regulations or trying to control something, whatever. The, the only thing, and, and if you look back at some of the notes and minutes, with the concert, with, with some of the activities we've had in town, the only thing this town was concerned about is that there was proper police to protection there, that there was fire and safety there in the event that somebody got sick, or somebody had a heart attack or whatever. But the select board, this is, this is, this is, these are different times. When you have a virus and, and you could have a, a, a gang, a, a 50, 150 people, could have been 300 people show up. Who knows what was gonna happen? And we just wanted to make sure that we were protecting the town. That, that was, and we never did anything other than do checking, period.
But then why didn't you say that, why didn't you say this at the meeting last time when Michelle presented all of this? Why didn't you say, you know, we're concerned, we're concerned about the health of the town? Bill, why don't you go do some checking on it? That was my point, that you just did this after the meeting. That, that's what I'm calling it.
We were checking before the meeting, as far as I, I remember.
How would you have checked about it if you didn't know about it?
There was no answer from the state, so there was nothing that even going on.
I think, I, I'm, I'm getting confused now because this makes no sense. You, you didn't know about it before the meeting. Bill didn't tell you about it before the meeting.
We knew about the meeting, but we didn't, we, we were just trying to verify to make sure it was a legal thing. And we didn't get any kind of feedback from the state of Amah.
Nobody's gonna correct this. Everybody is agreeing with this, that you all knew about it before the meeting and you checked before the meeting.
I don't know anything about the meeting.
We began to check. We had no answer, Wendy. Yes, we did, we did begin to check, so we would have somebody for the meeting, yes. Obviously. You don't go to a meeting without being checked.
Okay. And, and you didn't mention any of this at the meeting, though, that you had done, that you were doing this checking.
As far as I know, we did, but I, I could be wrong.
No, well, Bill will know, cause he said he's gonna.
I'll rewrite it, I'll write it exactly like it said.
Yeah, I think that's.
I'm sure we talked about that, I think, that we, I think, wouldn't.
I surrender. Sorry. I surrender.
That's okay.
Look, I think that this is turning into something that's, uh, I, 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 if, if we look at the big picture, what we need to decide as a community is, are we gonna have these gatherings or are we not? And there is a gap between what happened at the select board meeting, the cancellation of the V S O concert and this meeting. There is a lot of confusion. And I, I think that confusion needs to be straightened out.
Going forward, yeah. I agree.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think, you know, people want to have a, have a gathering, they can have a gathering as long as it conforms with the, the state regulations. Um, and I don't see there's a lot of confusion. I, I, I think there was a lot of, uh, there's, you have to understand, in this town, there were people, some people who, who don't care. There were some people who come see, come saw, and then there were people who were deathly afraid to leave their house. So it's a very hot topic, quite frankly. All right. Do we have any other business?
No, I want to eat.
Do we have any other business? Over comment? Okay, so the next, the, the next date of the meeting is July 20th.
So August 3rd.
No, sorry, you're right. It's, it's, I'm reading here. It's August, whatever it is. What is it? August 3rd, is it?
Third.
Third. At six o'clock here via Zoom. A motion to adjourn?
I will.
I will.
Well, are you, are you a further discussion? All in favor of adjournment? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Have a good night, everybody.